John, you good? Everybody good? Okay. All right, you ready? Mabel, you ready?
Good evening and welcome to the February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular session meeting of City Council. If you are with us tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters germane to City Council if the item you wish to speak to is not on the agenda. As to our light system, on our podium, we have a light system. After stating your name and address, the green light will appear. After two minutes, the yellow light will appear, and after three minutes, the red light will appear, and we ask that you take your seat. Written remarks may be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. The city code identifies the procedure for citizen participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address City Council on matters that are germane to the business of the council. Matters that are germane to the business of the council means matters that the City Council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, or your organization, including campaign information. Copies of the city ordinance regarding citizen participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. Please silence your phones at this time. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Father George with Saints Constantine and Helen Greek Orthodox Church will provide invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Harris will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is the practice of the council members to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome but are under no obligation to do so.
Let us pray. Great and most high God, you alone are immortal, abiding in unapproachable light. In wisdom you created the world, you separated the light from the darkness. You have judged us, giving thanks and offering you our evening praise. Shine in our hearts, loving master, the pure light of your divine knowledge, and open the eyes of our minds that we may understand the message of your gospel. We pray for our faithful, God-fearing leaders. Grant them, Lord, to govern in peace that we too may live calmly in piety and virtue. Remember, Lord, the city of Newport News where we live and every city and the faithful who live in them. May these proceedings this evening be to the betterment of our beloved city, and let your mercy be upon us, Lord, as we have put our hope in you. May this Valentine's Day of two thousand and twenty-three remind us of what needs to be shown and felt, that being love. This we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Please join me if you would like to pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father George. Public hearings, page four. Item E one is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a deed of easement by and between the city of Newport News, Virginia, and Virginia Electric and Power Company, doing business as Dominion Energy Virginia, granting utility easements over city-owned property located at four nine four and five two zero Minchville Road South to facilitate the upgrade of electrical services at Minchville Marina. In order to upgrade electrical services at the Minchville Marina, it is necessary to install a new underground electric service for a proposed ice machine and tool shed, remove existing overhead conductors and wood poles, and install new underground conductors to replace the overhead feed. These electrical improvements are required to be installed on city of Newport News property at four nine four and five two zero Minchville Road South. If granted, this easement will permit the construction of these electrical improvements. City manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
The move.
Second.
Is it moved and seconded? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Seven.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Page fifteen. Item E two is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing change of zoning application number Zulu dash two zero two two dash zero 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 two to AFLP ADV LLC from O one Office to C one Retail Commercial for a point eight eight nine acre property located at one two eight four three Jefferson Avenue. The proposed change of zoning will bring the property into compliance with the land use recommendations in the one city, one future twenty forty comprehensive plan, and will eliminate the nonconformity. On January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the City Planning Commission voted seven oh to recommend approval of change of zoning number Zulu dash two zero two two dash zero 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 two to City Council. City manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers? Is there a Gene Keller?
Gene Keller, one oh six Prince William Road, and I ask that you approve this rezoning so that we can have businesses that are compatible with the new zoning instead of just the O one office. We have too many empty office suites in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stephen Mead?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm the attorney for the applicant, and I'm just here for questions if the council has any.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
The move.
Is there? Moved and seconded? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Page thirty. Item E three is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing change of zoning number Charlie Zulu dash two zero two two dash zero 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 one to SKS Holdings LLC from C one Retail Commercial and O one Office to C one Retail Commercial with proffers and R three single-family dwelling to R three single-family dwelling with proffers for five parcels with a combined area of five point one five acres located at twelve eight three three, twelve eight three five, twelve eight three nine, twelve eight four one Jefferson Avenue and twenty-seven Buchanan Drive. The proposed change of zoning is consistent with the one city, one future twenty forty comprehensive plan land use map. The proffers assure the orderly development of the property and will allow the Jefferson Avenue properties to be developed for commercial uses. On January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the City Planning Commission voted five two to recommend approval of change of zoning number Charlie Zulu dash two zero two two dash zero 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 one with proffers. I see we have some speakers. Mr. Gene Keller?
Gene Keller, one oh six Prince William. I ask that you approve this rezoning so that the development can go forward in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stephen Mead?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager. My name is Stephen Mead. I'm an attorney with Carney Patterson and Mead, and I'm here representing the applicant tonight. We really want to talk to you just about a couple of things tonight in the time we have about the things that may not appear in the staff report. And primarily, the first one is that we worked for over a year with city staff to bring this application forward. The reason it took so long is after we had the September twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two community meeting, we went back and made a number of changes. We spent a couple of months changing the traffic flow and the entries to the property to try and minimize impacts from what we heard at that meeting. We also changed the, did a preliminary design for the stormwater to ensure that we'd be able to get the stormwater off of this property headed away from Hanover Heights and back up to the northern part of the property where it'd be held in stealing basins, and then we'll go into the existing city drainage facilities. Along with those, we did make a change from a six-foot wooden fence to a six-foot serpentine basinry wall that will run along the front edge of the thirty-foot buffer, so between the neighborhood, from our parking lot, then the wall, then thirty feet of buffer behind that. We agreed to all the traffic study requirements that were recommended, and we'd be doing all of those at our cost. One large item that may not get as much emphasis in the report is twenty-seven Buchanan Drive, the residential property. It's seventy-five feet of frontage by a hundred and fifty feet of depth. We're going to take down, we've proffered, and we will take down the existing residence, and we will then turn that into just a buffer and green area in perpetuity. So that will be a very large transition to help buffer this neighborhood. The other major change that really doesn't show is we took, we had a third building on the northern part of the property, which basically would have been behind the advanced auto. So we took that off in order to reduce traffic impacts and reran the traffic study once we had taken that off. And really, that was primarily to help shift traffic count away from Buchanan Drive and where this neighborhood would be most impacted. So we did respond to the community when we heard them and listened to what they had to say, and we think that we've done everything we can to mitigate, maybe not everything we can, but we've done a lot to mitigate what, the complaints and things that we heard, particularly about the trash and things blowing into the neighborhoods and about the amount of traffic that's coming through there as well. So this project does comply with comprehensive plan. It's a development that matches the character of the commercial corridor on Jefferson Avenue, and these businesses will help reinvigorate this part of Jefferson. We do have tonight both of our engineers, civil engineers, as well as traffic engineer, and we have a representative from Wawa and another representative from Chick-fil-A, as well as the family that owns these properties. So I'm going to stop there and ask if there's any questions in the time I have left.
Mr. Ely?
Thank you for that insight. With all the extra stuff that you do about listening to the community, what dollar amount extra are your clients putting out to make an adjustment for the community?
I don't know that I have it broken down by what we had before and after. The total amount estimated is six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we would be doing, and that is all going into those types of improvements, but some of those did exist before we had the community meeting.
But those, that six hundred and seventy-five thousand is addition, is an additional amount to make it ease with the community?
Yes, sir. It's, you know, things to mitigate the impacts on the community. Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Long?
Can you talk a little bit about the neighborhood injury? I know I've had some comments about the traffic going back into Buchanan. Can you, can you describe how you would make improvements to that area so that way we don't have cars cutting through?
Yes, sir. The main thing that we've done there, and this was after the community meeting, is we went back and came up, we did, we talked to city traffic engineers, well, of our engineers about whether we could do speed bumps, and no one seemed to like that because of the potential for damage to vehicles. So what we came up with was putting a traffic island in. So we have now proffered to put a traffic island in. It would be comparable, not, it won't look exactly the same, but similar to what's on the other side of Jefferson at Sonoma Woods. It'd be a concrete island in the middle of Buchanan Drive, and it will have landscaping and signage for Hanover Heights. And really, what it is, is a traffic calming measure. We wanted to be a clear definition, you're leaving the commercial area and moving into a residence. So please slow down, because we heard a lot about people who cut through to get to Richneck Road, and a lot of traffic speeding is going through there, too.
What was the pushback on the speed bumps? Who pushed back?
Damage to vehicles, and apparently some, you know, there's some concern about safety and fire and police vehicles getting in and there, out there at speed if there's speed bumps as well.
I have a quick question. Has the community been shared on the updated ingress egress models that you've been put in place or looking to put in place since the initial conversation of this development?
We did not have another community meeting after the first one. We were getting comments like unless you're going to give up Chick-fil-A or Wawa, then we don't have anything left to talk about, and so we did not push them on that. We did submit all the plans to the city, and of course, those are publicly available.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmember Karen McPherson, three one seven Office Square Lane. We are the traffic consultant for the applicant and work side by side with the city for over a year. Today, the site is vacant, and we recognize that anything we put on the site will generate more traffic than today. When we learned about the two applicants, we were very excited. I mean, they're great businesses coming to the area, but from a traffic perspective, we paid special attention to the traffic generation. We looked in the national standards and actually applied a factor to make sure we were very conservative in looking at the impacts. We also not only looked at the impacts, but we looked at internal queuing as they were initially proposed to share access. In conversations with the city, we identified that they needed, initially, they had only one direct access on Jefferson. When we worked with the city, we identified the need that they needed two direct accesses on Jefferson so that the northern access would be more favorable to the Chick-fil-A where the secondary direct access on Jefferson would be for the Wawa. But we also recognized that there's going to be traffic on Buchanan. So as a traffic engineer, our efforts were twofold. First and foremost, we need to meet level of service criteria and operations at Jefferson and Buchanan in this situation, but we also heard from the applicant, we need to meet the needs of the residents on Buchanan. So when we did our study, first and foremost, when we looked at Jefferson and Buchanan, we had to meet level of service operations. This favors Jefferson Avenue, so we proposed providing flashing yellow arrows. It's more efficient, and it's safer for the motoring public. We also had to look at side street delay. In this situation, what we proposed today, the side streets operate concurrently. In order to achieve level of service, we proposed putting flashing yellow arrows in. Same maneuver so that when you come out and you're a left turn, you get a protected move, you get that, and then the flashing yellow arrow. In order to provide this, we have to have dedicated lefts. So westbound, on the opposite side of the street, we were able to widen in the median. On the east side, we were not. So there was a balance. So in order to achieve level of service, we had to shift the through movement. So we worked, and we feel like this is a great balance because what it allows is, on Buchanan, it will function as, sorry, I see the, I don't want to take up too much time. We did look at the counts. It's very minor going straight across the street, so we had to shift the through movement to the right. There's only two vehicles based on historical counts provided by the city doing this. So functionally, leaving Buchanan, you have an exclusive left and exclusive right for a majority of the day. So our operation is able to achieve level of service, and it maintains the character of Buchanan as a residential street and encourages commercial traffic to use the direct access on Buchanan. So I do want to recognize, we are adding more traffic, but we feel we have a very balanced solution that meets the needs of the city as well as the residents on Buchanan. And I'm on standby for additional questions.
Excuse me. I just want you to finish.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just.
No, I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Yes, and so we feel like this is a very balanced solution because, again, we have to meet level of service and operational improvements, but we feel like this is a very balanced solution. As Mr. Mead indicated, we heard the concerns of the applicant as far as traffic calming, and so that island immediately west of the Wawa will say, I'm at a residential neighborhood, slow down, it narrows, it allows traffic to say, I'm at a different character. And then the two outbound lanes, again, operationally, based on the volumes we were provided by the city, you'll have a dedicated left and a shared through right. It's a very minor amount of traffic going across the street, and so for the most part, you'll have a dedicated left and a dedicated right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My name is Jeremy Yee with Kimberly Horn. We are the civil engineer for this project. I'm here really to answer any site design questions you might have. This is a great project. We've been working on it for about a year now. Thank you to the staff working closely with us. That's last thought put into the design, as you can see, and we are real proud of this project and hope that you approve us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Paymon Nadimi, two sixty West Baltimore Pike, Wawa, Pennsylvania. I am a Wawa employee. I'm a real estate project engineer here to really answer any questions that you may have about Wawa in general. I do want to talk just for a couple of minutes about the impact that Wawa provides to the community when they come to a community. So every new Wawa takes about six months to construct. It employs about fifty to seventy skilled construction workers, and then once the store opens, a typical Wawa employs about forty people. And these forty associates are all corporate employees. They are all receiving competitive wages. They can enroll in our 401K program. They also become part owner of the company. Wawa is a privately held company, and it's owned forty percent by associates, including store associates, and they become part owner as well. Wawa also tries to be very involved in the community, support different activities. We obviously support the first responders during emergencies, and then the Wawa Foundation supports local charities as well. In Newport News, last year, we supported the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, one walk in May of last year, and for all. any food that's left over at the Wawa is donated to the local food bank and to help with the, with the charities that support the homeless and hunger in the community. So with that, I'm open to any questions that the council members may have.
Any questions?
If I can, Mr. Mayor. I did get some calls from residents in the area. Can you tell me, is, and one of them, what particular, talking about excessive litter once a Wawa comes? You know, I am in the South District, but we do have a Wawa on Jefferson and Harpersville, and it's been such a good neighbor, and I was, was telling the residents that we have not had that problem because of talking to the manager. They do have a special program to make sure they're providing that extra push to make sure the area is clean and to do all they can as good citizens to provide cleanliness for the area residents. So can you speak to that on your behalf as a corporate person from Wawa?
Sure, sure, thank you, and thank you for the kind words. Absolutely. Cleanliness, Wawa is known for our clean stores, and we take pride in that. And the managers and all the associates are specially trained to make sure the store is clean. There are standard operating procedures that the manager, the system managers and the associates go through every hour, walking the site, walking the store, walking in the restrooms to make sure the restrooms are clean, the site in general is clean, to pick up litter. So that is important, because mainly it's good for business.
Right.
Right? Because if you come into a clean store, that's what people look for when you go into a convenience store. Clean store, clean restrooms, clean, well-lit parking lot. So we take that very seriously, and we train our associates to work on that.
Thank you.
So thank you for your kind words.
All right, and thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Harry Actonson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Harry Actonson, Jr. I'm a resident of Newport News, born and raised here. The thing that we don't understand here, and that the people have been kind of misled, is there are a lot of people here to talk on item number four. Well, this is a precursor, this is related to item four. This is what they say they're gonna do, they're gonna put in this barrier and do all this other stuff. Nobody's come to the residents. Nobody's come and asked us. Putting in that barrier pass there where the houses are, you're gonna take people's property away, because there's nowhere for them to park. There are no sidewalks in that community. There's only one bus stop for all 400 houses in that community, which is located on Buchanan in Tazewell. That's for kindergarten, elementary, middle school, and high school. Our kids riding on the road, there's no place else for them to go, there are no sidewalks. So how are we gonna accommodate this? We also have, with that median going in, how are the car carriers gonna get into Charles Barker, the old Charles Barker Lexus? They pull in and have to make that left turn. Well, that's gonna force them to stop on Buchanan and unload there, thereby stopping all traffic. Nobody's talked to the neighbors and got our input. I would just like to ask council, if they hold off on voting on this until you hear everybody from number four, speaking on the Wawa and the problems that we're gonna have with just traffic? Because I hear the young lady say, well, they're gonna make Buchanan and Jefferson a right turn or left turn. I'm sorry, the school buses go straight across, or come straight across also, to pick up and drop off kids. So that's gonna change school bus routes. I go straight across all the time. So for two cars, I'm sorry, I don't know who they had counting. Because I can sit there any day and count four or five in one sitting while I'm waiting for the light while I'm stuck in traffic, because anybody's been down in Demby on a Friday? You ain't making a right turn, you catch a gap and go straight across. And imagine what the traffic headache's gonna be. And just wait till Demby Boulevard's finished and Richneck's open. That's gonna be a straight cut through, straight up Richneck is backed up, they're gonna cut down Buchanan all the way through there. It's crazy. I just ask that you hold off on voting on this until you actually hear all the comments, because people didn't realize that this was actually tied into item number four. And once you hear everybody, the neighborhood's here, we came here on Valentine's Day and suspended it with our honeys. So we mean, you know I'm in trouble. All right? I just please ask you to hear us out before you make any swift changes. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. City Manager.
Counsel, would it be helpful if we had someone from planning just explain the items and how they're related to each other and the timing of them? I just think it would be helpful for the, for the citizens to hear.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers and Mayor. The way this is set up, there are four items on your agenda. The first one was the rezoning for the advanced auto, so that's done. The second item has to do with the five parcels that are owned by SKS, and that rezoning allows for the O1 property that's currently O1 to come into a C1 zoning district with proffers. It also provides proffers on the C1 parcel that establish certain things to happen, and it finally gives the R3 parcel as a piece of green space. The way it's set up, the, the rezoning happens first so that you have certain conditions or proffers that are voluntarily given to the city by the applicant. The next case that you will hear is for a Wawa, it is for a convenience store with gas. The rezoning does not mean that it has to be a Wawa or a convenience store with gas, it just means that those proffers and conditions that are placed voluntarily by the applicant have to be adhered to. Keep in mind that the corner piece is already zoned C1, and a Wawa can be applied for without the rezoning. So that can happen without the rezoning with no proffers. The third case you're going to hear is a conditional use permit for a drive-through restaurant, which they're saying is going to be a Chick-fil-A. But essentially, the three cases are intertwined in that the establishment of the traffic improvements are tied to the proffers that have been given to you with the rezoning. And I don't know if I've further confused you or if I've clarified. So the rezoning has to happen for the, the O1 parcel to become C1 so that the drive-through use could potentially go there. The proffers for the corner piece are to give you certain things in place in certain time, such as the traffic improvements and the green space. So that's how they are laid out.
So just, just, just to clarify, so to make sure everyone who's here on Valentine's Day is on the same page, so item three, four, and five, they're intertwined, but if we were to pass item three, we could still kick back item four, is that correct?
That is correct, but keep in mind that item three lays out.
Sets conditions.
Conditions for traffic improvements that the applicant has voluntarily made.
Okay. Just, I have one further question. So let's say we pass item three, item four does not pass, what are the second order effects of that?
So the applicant can still build something on the corner parcel or that portion of the site that meets the conditions or the proffers placed upon it by them. So they would have to make those traffic improvements, they would still have to allow for the residential parcel to be green space. I'm trying to think of what the proffers state, but essentially, they'd have to meet those proffers. They could build a commercial enterprise on it, but they would have to basically meet the proffers. They did not proffer that it would only be a gas station and only be a drive-through restaurant. So keep that in mind.
Okay. Counsel, do we have any other questions? Thank you.
Just to let counsel know, these parcels have to be zoned C1 to qualify for the council to consider a conditional use permit. So you could, even if the, the property that's already C1 is not, the proffered zoning is not passed, they can still build a commercial use there without the proffers. They just can't have the gas pumps and they can't have the drive-through for the restaurant.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. At this time, do we have any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Against.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Sister close the public.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Against.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Against.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carry, five two.
Thank you. Item E4 is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit number Charlie Umbrella two dash two zero two two dash zero 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 five to SKS Holdings LLC to allow for the operation of an automobile gasoline supply station in conjunction with the convenience store on a combined 2.07 acre parcel located at 12833 and a portion of 12835 Jefferson Avenue zoned C1 retail commercial. The use is consistent with the One City, One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan land use designation. On January 18th, 2023, City Planning Commission voted for three to recommend approval of conditional use permit Charlie Uniform dash two zero two two dash zero zero five with conditions. We have a lot of speakers, so I just wanna make sure that we do, we're respectful of the time. We have a lot of people, we're gonna make sure that everyone's voice is heard. Please, when the red light comes on, yield your time. Thank you. Azir Sian, I'm sorry if I messed that up. Okay. Thank you.
My name is Azir Sian. I'm resident 734 Pelham Drive, Newport News, Virginia 2360. Everybody hello.
Happy birthday.
My main concern is we putting two very high-traffic monster stubble in this one little space. At the same time, it's, it's closed, it, it does not seem good, it is not too much, it is a lot. These kind of businesses need big space, they're not in the residence area. And same time, they're going to bring too much traffic and too much crime. And Buchanan Street is a very small street, and we have already so much accident going on, crossing from my side to the other side, and it's gonna bring so much accident, because when the people coming from the Buchanan side, through my side, it's gonna bring so much traffic, you know, and so much accident. So we already have so many gas stations in this area, every corner have a gas station, 7-Eleven, Exxon, Sitco, Shell, we have four, four gas stations in that neighborhood in, in just one area, you know. And if we can bring something different, not a gas station, it'd be good, you know. And one family gonna benefit and destroy so many other families, you know. And why we need other gas stations? Please do something different and make our city better and make our neighborhood safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy Sian.
Hi, my name is Tammy Sian. I'm at 734 Pelham Drive in Newport News, Virginia. I own the property located at 12836 Jefferson Avenue, Newport News. I also own and operate the business Sitcomart. I have been in business for 25 years now, and I have seen businesses come and go in the city of Newport News. And a lot of it has to do with not being compatible where it is being proposed to go. For instance, this Wawa, or any other gas station, does not belong backed up to a neighborhood or a business as big as that should go closer to an interstate, something more compatible with the flow of traffic in the neighborhood, like a restaurant, is which I have heard from many residents, and that would be more appealing. I myself am opposed to this project because I am a gas station owner. We have eight gas stations within a two and a half mile or so distance, and I do not feel that another one is needed. We all have food programs, we all have gas, we all sell snacks and drinks. So why do we need another gas station? Let's meet halfway and try to come up with something better for this community other than another gas station. And let the ones that are already existing continue to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. David Jones.
How y'all doing? I'm David Jones. I am, I live at 734 Pelham Drive. I lived in this community for 30 years, and I just don't believe that we should have another gas station in this area. I think that it's gonna bring a lot of traffic, a lot of headache. I think that they are trying to do too much, that they're putting two big massive businesses on such a small property, that you should either pick one or the other. I think it's gonna bring too much traffic and attention over here. It is 24/7, or 24, you know, seven days a week. What are they gonna do with the after hours? Because almost every Wawa you go to, there's a police officer sitting in the parking lot. I just think that y'all should take that into consideration, and you know, you just shook your head, that after hours, this business is, what is it gonna do butted up to a neighborhood with only a six-foot tall fence? I'm 6'1". What is that gonna stop? Not nothing. I'm not for having another gas station in our community when we have so many. I just wish that y'all would consider putting something else. That's all.
Thank you. John Michels.
Good evening. My name is John Michaels, and I live at 1643 Malibu Place, Newport News, Virginia. I'm a veteran and a special education teacher here in the city, and I'm here to speak out against the conditional use permit for this property. When I bought my house in 2008, coming off my third deployment, when it rained, the street flooded, but it did not come up to the backyard. My backyard backs up to Buchanan. Now, when they took away the natural drainage areas, when they built the Zaxby's, and it rains, now it comes all the way up to about 10 feet from my back door. I'm worried that when they do this whole entire project, the drainage hasn't been addressed yet, and now where is that water coming? Into the neighborhood and into our homes? And I don't feel it's been addressed at all. And then they came back with the, besides the environment, the island doesn't work either at Sonoma Woods. When the kids run the buses, the buses are running, people stop at those islands, and they're choke points, because they're letting their kids on and off the bus. So my question is, if we allow this to go forward, are my insurance rates are gonna go up? And how much of a choke point, and how much more dangerous is it gonna become for our children to go to school every day? Or is my neighbor's house gonna get flooded? Has any of this been addressed? I thank y'all for your time.
So the water is 10 feet?
From the back door, from my back door, not 10 feet up, where I can look out and it's 10 feet, man.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Vicki Freeman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Vicki Seokas Freeman. I'm a first-generation Greek-American, born and raised in Newport News. You're gonna hear from my niece, who's gonna speak for my mother, so this is kinda part B of this, of our story. How did we get here? My mom retired in 2015 after running Stephen John's for 30 years, nearly 20 of those years alone after our father passed away. In 2015, we leased the building to Plaza Azteca. It was great. We called it.
Good evening. My name is John Michaels, and I live at sixteen forty-three Malibu Place, Newport News, Virginia. I'm a veteran and a special education teacher here in the city, and I'm here to speak out against the conditional use permit for this property. When I bought my house in two thousand and eight, coming off my third deployment, when it rained, the street flooded, but it did not come up to the backyard. My backyard backs up to Buchanan. Now, when they took away the natural drainage areas, when they built the Zaxby's, it, it rains. Now it comes all the way up to about ten feet from my back door. I'm worried that when they do this whole entire project, their, the drainage hasn't been addressed yet, and now where is that water coming? Into the neighborhood and into our homes? And then I don't feel it's been addressed at all. And then they came back with the, uh, besides the environment, the island doesn't work either. It's in no more woods. When the kids run the buses, the buses are running, people stop at those islands, and they're choke points because they're letting their kids on and off the bus. So my question is, if we allow this to go forward, are my insurance rates are gonna go up? And how much of a choke point, how much more dangerous is it gonna become for our children to go to school every day? Or is my neighbor's house, are you gonna get flooded? Has any of this been addressed? I thank y'all for your time.
Wait, so the water is ten feet?
From the back door, from my back door, not ten feet up to where I can look out, and it's ten feet, man.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicki Freeman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Vicki Seokis Freeman. I'm a first generation Greek American, born and raised in Newport News. You're gonna hear from my niece who's gonna speak for my mother, so this is kind of part B of this, of our story. How did we get here? My mom retired in two thousand and fifteen after running Stephen John's for thirty years, nearly twenty of those years alone after our father passed away. In two thousand and fifteen, we leased the building to Plaza Azteca. It was great. We called the Greek Taco. Our family is Greek. Theirs is Mexican, and a couple of years later, fire struck. After that, rebuilding began, then disagreement, and then COVID. Our mother, who wants to retain ownership of this property through these leases, has given up the quick dollar, if you will, by not selling and by not leasing to just any use that could and would pay to lease her property, for example, car dealerships, hookah lounges, gentlemen's clubs, private ambulance offices, and parking facilities. We believe the proposed development will bring a much-needed infusion of private investment to the North District, a part of Newport News that we all know could use and benefit from new jobs, new amenities, and an increased tax base that will support our schools, those in need, and foster a greater level of interest in more quality development. We met with the community and addressed each and every concern that was raised and earned the support of the planning department and the various city department teams that supports it, from traffic engineering, the fire department, school safety, and the police department. We were in front of the planning commission a few weeks ago. We asked for their support to collaborate, to do good things for the city. They agreed. All six applications won their approval. This op, this proposed opportunity is not a sale. We are not selling these properties. They will be owned by our mom and one day by us, her children and grandchildren. We would enter into ground leases, which means we retain ownership and therefore control of the property. We are working with best-in-class tenants, which are long-term in nature, fifteen and twenty-year terms, whereby they will be paying for the right to use our land. They will invest in the building of their buildings, so you would have three private parties coming together to, to bring the development to reality. These transactions require substantial investment on our part, a mortgage to develop, and stringent criteria to perform as private developers. We've always been good neighbors, stewards of our communities and the places that we call home. I'm a C E graduate. I served on the Board of Visitors for eight years, two governor-appointed terms, and I served with the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank for seven years. I worked side by side with Bobby Freeman to bring his vision of Port Work to reality, now nearly twenty-three years ago, and almost nineteen years of marriage, love, and our son Chris, who is nine and not happy that I'm not with him tonight either. But from love of community grew a place that consistently, consistently gives back and is home to hundreds. Countless jobs were created, free community events like summer concerts, festivals, and my favorite, the annual Christmas tree lighting. We bring joy to countless citizens that bring together a broad spectrum of our community. People of all races, religions, beliefs, and socioeconomic backgrounds, typically multi-generational, like us tonight.
One second.
Mr. Mayor, can we never finish?
Thank you. Thank you.
Just one, one second. We're gonna have, have order tonight. So when there is a question that is asked, the time is going to reset. After this, if the clerks, once it hits red, if there's no question, we can say thank you, okay? For the question.
Thank you. Much like this evening, our family has been in Newport News for over sixty years, and in this room, we have three generations of the Seokis family, our mother, my sister, and her children. Back to the facts. I know for a fact that I've consumed my body weight multiple times over in Chick-fil-A sandwiches, fries, and sweet tea. When I worked in New York, people asked me how I was so sweet in such a tough business, and I said, I li, I drink a lot of sweet tea as my home is in the South. We believe in these brands, how they engage in the communities they do business in, and the ethos of family business. With Wawa, while we never ran a gas station, we can relate with their start as a small family dairy that has evolved as we are helping mom to evolve with her small business, thirty years in the making of assembling five parcels of property. Wawa's dedication to service, family-friendly environment, and broad selection of affordable food and beverage items. In particular, we admire.
We appreciate it. We, we gave you the extra time.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Fifi Goulitis? Thank you. Apologies for the.
Alright, so good evening. My name is Spofy, like Sophie.
My name is Helen Seokis, the owner from this property.
So, uh, two ten Longwood Drive, Newport News. I will be reading the statement on my yes behalf. I came to America from Greece at the age of twenty-one. My husband came to America before me at age eighteen. I didn't know how to speak or write English, but I learned while working the cash register in our downtown Newport News restaurant where I worked with my husband, Steve. Steve followed his relatives here, where they had a foothold and a job to offer. However, he saw opportunity in Newport News, a place to raise his family, and that he did. We raised our children, Gus, Maria, and Vicki. Gus graduated from Ferguson High School, went to VCU, and is now a decorated Army veteran. My daughter Maria is also a graduate from Ferguson High School and went to George Mason. She earned her master's in education and taught in Northern Virginia for a decade. She came back to Newport News where Vicki and I were. She came to Newport News to raise her family, her spouse Theo, and they now own a, a business of their own, Schooner's Grill in Warwick Boulevard. Maria and Theo have two beautiful daughters, Dora, who is a current junior at Minchville High School, and me, also graduate from Minchville High School and a recent alum for Virginia Tech. My daughter Maria is a teacher for over thirty years. She is a twenty-year veteran of the Newport News Public School System. She currently teaches French at both Crittenon and Heinz Middle Schools. My three children all help me in unique ways. Gus with my finances, Maria being my constant companion, and Vicki, my real estate professional. I will greatly appreciate your support in helping me transform my life's work into the next stage of business for me and my family. Please vote to support the rezoning and conditional use permits before you this evening. I dedicated my life to the hospitality of my guests, and now I ask for your support in bringing new life to the Dumbie area where I have owned and operated my family business for thirty years.
Thank you very much, and I hope you have a happy Valentine's Day. Good night.
Thank you.
Curtis Majors?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Curtis Majors, one thirty-four Tazewell Road, Newport News, Virginia. Retired Army Special Ops over twenty-seven years. I've been in my property at one thirty-four Tazewell Road for over thirty-seven years. Every time it rains in my area, which is the third street over, I always have to go out, get the gutter trash from the gutters because of the flooding, because of the water issues. In the back of my property, I have more trash back there than your city dump has. No one, not no one in this room has approached me about the, the loss I've taken in nineteen ninety-nine when I had hurricane flood. No one from the engineers, from the entire planning committee have talked to me or personally about the finances that I had to pay. I lost over a hundred thousand dollars trying to restore my property because of the infrastructure's getting old and the water drainage that constantly comes down there. Now, with this increase of Wawa and all the other activities and the gas station, I want to address the security issues. I'd like to address the, what type of plan that we have in place. I noticed the engineers, I went to that one meeting, that one meeting that they had, and they talked about what type of engineer projects they had in planning. We didn't talk to anybody in the neighborhood. That's a concern of, of my, uh, with the projects. It appears to me that this is a, a project that's been fast-paced, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, and nobody has taken into consideration of the impact of that head over heights area that's gonna be affected of about a four hundred people. It appears to me that it looked like that, uh, you know, I heard people speak, and it appears to be one-sided. Uh, to the board members of Mr. Mayor, I just wanna say thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you. Gene Keller?
Gene Keller, one oh six Prince William Road. I, I ask that you folks approve this conditional use permit. Couple of reasons. One, we need vibrant businesses in the area that are, that have a history of doing right. We have the abandoned Rite Aid drugstore at Colony in Warwick that has been vacant for several years. We have a restaurant that's in between Sherman Williams and the Hardee's that's been abandoned for over five years. It's now a truck parking lot. We have a, a, a space up on Jefferson Avenue between Mesa Drive and Ridgeway Drive that a chain-length fence around it that's been abandoned for many years. We, Wawa and Chick-fil-A have a history of, of vibrant business that is not come here and leave in a couple of years. The, the, uh, my, my big concern is that we need stability, and we need businesses that are, that treat the neighborhood right. Wawa stores, they are not franchise-owned. They're owned by the corporation and the family because they are gonna retain ownership of the, of the property. They are also guardians of it for, for us. It's not like a franchise place. Corporate has to get on the franchise owner to straighten his act up, hear the family directly and the corporation. I ask for your support for this approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Adele Sian?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and everybody. Thank you for being here on this lovely day. Alright, my name is Adele Sian, and I live at seven thirty-four Pelham Drive, Newport News, Virginia. I, from Pakistan, born in Pakistan, but I'm raised here, went to Woodside High School, graduated with Vice Mayor Curtis Bethany, and went off to ODU and graduated from ODU with a computer science degree. Okay, I've been here all my life, and, uh, we have so many great businesses. Like where they're trying to put this Wawa, ninety percent of those businesses are owned by local, not by these big corporations that don't care about their communities. All they care about is themselves. They come in and they leave. They don't care about anybody else. Okay, I heard from so many people, like they had community meetings to talk to the community. Not once they went to the community, they had one meeting, and all I heard in that community is our property. We can do whatever we want, and the community doesn't matter. That's all we heard, nothing else. They never went back to the neighborhood. They never walked those streets and just like to check on people and like had, like, you know, like just take their opinion to see like what matters. And my second thing, thing is, within a mile radius, you have six gas stations, and that's not counting all the convenience stores that you have in the neighborhoods. That's just like the gas stations. Why do we need another gas station? Yeah, you guys talk about you guys wanna bring the Newport News city up, but there has to be a better way other than just like bringing gas stations to Newport News. And my second thing is, and my third thing is, is the crime. I work at the Sitco gas station where, right across street from the Wawa, they're, where they're trying to put it, put it there. And, uh, every year, either there's a robbery at my store or I'm being shot at, and there's nothing that has been done. Every month, there's a accident at the intersection. There's nothing that's been done. So why are we all of a sudden, Wawa wants to come there, and we wanna change our whole city to just like, you know, to suit them? What about like the community? Okay, and another thing I wanna talk about is like, I mean, Wawa's gonna be a twenty-four hour business. You've seen what happens at the, the cookout and that Shell gas station. Literally like not a month ago, I mean, the officer Harry's here, like there was a drunk driving accident. The guy died right on scene. I even like witnessed an accident like in their property where I went in. A car flew in, and I seen nothing but the lady guts. There's so much traffic already. I mean, you get on Jefferson at four o'clock, like it takes you hour just to get out. And that's not counting like, God forbid, if, if there's an accident on sixty-four. What you guys gonna do then? Yeah, like everybody promises everything, like they're gonna change the roads. They're gonna do that. They don't do nothing. I mean, they put Charles Barker Lexus there, and when they put that dealership there, they promised the community they're gonna put the wall, they're gonna block all the noise out. Nothing has been done. They put KCBMW there, same thing. They promised the community, we'll do that, we'll do that. Nothing has been done. And same thing with this Wawa. Yeah, it's gonna come there, but it's like they're not looking at, looking at it from the community perspective. They're only looking at it from their perspective, just about the money.
I'm gonna pause you just because, is that the red light? But we let someone go over for a minute, so you have, you got an extra minute.
Okay.
About that, just to balance it out.
Yeah, just say no to Wawa, please.
Well, but you, you mentioned, uh, Mr. Mayor, just, you mentioned that the car dealerships came there.
Yes.
So what's your complaint about them? You keep, you said nothing has been done. What, what, what is the problem with the car dealers?
Problem is, okay, first of all, like if you go down to Jefferson, if you go, if you look at all the gas station, there is not one gas station that's butted into the community. Like each gas station has some space behind them where they're like away from the community, if you look at all the gas station. But if you go look at KCBMW, they're in paper, at people's backyard. You go Charles Walker Lexus, they in people's backyard. All those mechanics, they throwing beer bottles, profanity. And yeah, Mr. Wawa, like they're representative saying he's gonna provide forty jobs, so he, he, he's saying that he's gonna build forty jobs at that Wawa? How's that possible? And he said he's forced the community. Tell me one day he walked back there with our community, that's gonna be affected by that. Ask anybody. Has he ever, has they ever seen him or anybody from this side came to the community and talked to the community? Hey, like what do you guys think? We want our city to go up. We want good businesses to come in our city. But we don't want like everywhere you go, it's like nothing but car dealerships and gas stations. Like enough is enough. You already have sis gas stations within a mile. How many other gas stations do you need? And not just that, the crime. Like I'm telling you from my personal perspective, they're putting this gas station right across street from where I work at. I got shot at. I can show you the video. I had four guy, guy, guys walked in. They put guns in my head. I still have like nightmares. Okay, and every time there's an accident, I'm the first one to get out there to the road and like call nine one one and see like to help them. Wawa's not gonna do that. Wawa's not gonna limit a crime. When Hurricane Isabel came, they weren't there to help the community. We were. We held our store open twenty-four seven without power, without anything to help our community, help our, like, the first aid people. Yeah, we, I want our city to go up, but I don't want like something that, like, doesn't even make sense.
Thank.
Has no like business there. Thank you, guys.
Golsan Sian?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Golsan Sian, and I'm asking that you deny the conditional use work, uh, permit and say no to Wawa. This will bring traffic and crime into the area and have a permanent effect to the residential area and small business owners. As the city representatives have just said, any business that would go there, it would increase traffic. But here, there's a plan to double the amount of parking spots that is already there. That's a lot of traffic, much more than Plaza Azteca was bringing in. And the fact that the customer base that we're talking, it's a different type of, of base you're asking when you're putting a Wawa there. It's people who are unknown members of the community. And this Wawa will bring noise and light pollution. This Wawa is going to be open twenty-four seven. It's not gonna close. I understand that there are precautions being taken to try and mitigate the effects, but these are just theories. And I appreciate that a lot of hard work is, has been done to do that research. But the residents that are there should not be left with a permanent aftermath of whatever will happen. And there, and what will happen is there will be traffic. There will be more people coming into these neighborhoods. Please do not allow Wawa to be built in that area. I see the future. As a resident representative for S K S said, they did not like what they heard from the residents. They hosted one meeting. They heard, they heard a few concerns. That was the first time, I believe, most residents heard, they had maybe a week's notice to understand what was going on. And after that meeting, they decided to. after that meeting, they decided to cut all communications with the residents. This is the type of business you're asking to be putting in, put into our neighborhood. A corporation that is open twenty-four sevens is bringing, bringing in noise pollution, light pollution, and brings own unknown customers. And worst of all, and worst of all, the fact that communication was cut off with residents. The fact that after one meeting, they heard concerns and decided, we don't want to deal with these residents. We don't want to deal with this community. Please do not do this to us. Vote no, or please at least hold off on giving yourself some time and this community some time. We do not want a neighbor that is open twenty-four seven is not, decides to cut off communication with us. Please vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sadia Riaz?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sadia Riaz and I live in Sonoma Woods, uh, Sonoma Woods fifteen eighty-two Malibu. Please, I live over there. It's been almost four or five years and I have three kids that go to school. And I know every time my kids are coming off the bus or getting on the bus, there is already a lot of traffic. And in the morning, when we go to work, it's the same thing. Like on that light, we stay there for like two minutes just to take one turn. And you're talking about Wawa, you're bringing Wawa over there. That means you're bringing more traffic over there. So how many people are going to be staying in that lane just to take right turn or left turn or whatever? Because if you're taking left turn and you're taking right turn, of course that traffic is going to merge into and that there's, that mean there's going to be more traffic on that road. That means there is going to be, people are going to be late from work and people have to wake up early to go to work because I have to deal with that every single day, early in the morning, when I have to take that light early in the morning to go to work. Like every day, I'm just hustling because I have to drop off my kids to school or to their bus and go to my work. And that's not what I really expect from the, um, all that scenario that I'm going to be more late from there. And of course, me and my kids, I don't want them to be going on the street where I see all these traffic, all these people on the road where it's, where there is not even a sidewalk. Is it safe for the kids to walk on those roads and get off the bus and get on the bus? I mean, I don't think so. It's really, it's really fair with those kids to take the livelihood from their lives, like if they want to get outside from their house. I mean, is it fair with the kids? I don't think so. I mean, you all probably have kids. You should know that better. So, I mean, my only thing is, I mean, I don't really, um, want Wawa over there. I mean, I would love for some businesses over there. I don't really complain about anything else, but I only want something that's more suitable to the community over there. I mean, yeah, if you're bringing Wawa over there, who's going to be their customers? These people, that community over there, right? And if they don't want Wawa over there, then how are you going to bring all those four hundred people from that community to that store if they're opposing that? You're not, right? You're telling those four hundred people, no, we don't want you to go to Wawa, right? Because if you're opposing that, of course you don't want that over there. So if you were telling those four hundred people, no, you can't go to that store because you're opposing it. So that's not fair with the community over there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Stephen Mead?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Stephen Mead, Corney Patterson and Mead for the applicant. Two things I'd like to address. First is we've heard a couple of the commenters speak about sidewalks. And I agree, if you drive through that neighborhood, I lived in, just across the way in Windsor Great Park for fourteen years. If you drive through and into that neighborhood, there's no sidewalks. Our development does not go that far, but to the extent that we are doing development along the side of the sidewalks, part of our proffers and part of our requirements with the city is to put in sidewalks that will connect up to Jefferson. So we are helping do that part of it at least. The other part I'd like to address is we're hearing a number of people talk about drainage. I think with Mr. Atkins and Mr. Michaels and Mr. Major all mentioned that. There's no question, there's a drainage problem in the neighborhood now. But there's also no question from the engineers, and I rely on those engineers, the city staff as well as our engineers, this is going to improve that drainage problem. Right now, there's a failed drainage pond behind the existing restaurant, which is defunct and not operating and was burglarized a couple of months ago. That is going to get torn out and replaced with a new pond, a BMP pond that's up to the current standards. And so this is going, this project will help some of that, um, neighborhood water that's going into the neighborhood now go in the other direction, go into the city's existing stormwater ponds. So I know we've got a lot of speakers, so I'm going to stop, take any questions and then sit back down.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, because I, you know, I hear what the people are saying about the water, the ten feet of water, but that seems like a separate issue from this project. And, um, that's something that has been happening whether this project moves forward or not is that.
Absolutely. When I lived there in ninety-nine, I had four feet of water in my backyard and I'm talking vertically this time as opposed to, you know, coming across the yard. It was Hurricane Floyd, if I remember the right name. And it was terrible. But since then, the city's done a lot of work on that drainage area up there. They've changed that large pond that's farther up Denby. And so a lot of that has gotten better from my understanding. And, um, city engineering's, when we checked with them after the community meeting, said they'd only had one complaint in the past couple of years. So things could still be happening, but the city's not getting complaints about it from the citizens.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen McPherson?
Karen McPherson, three one seven Office Square Lane, Virginia Beach, Virginia. As it was indicated from city staff, the traffic study was done as a comprehensive for the whole, um, development. It was addressed in the previous item. So unless you have any specific questions, I'll respect the fact that there are a lot of speakers tonight.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Leonard Fensom?
Good afternoon, council members. Mayor.
How are you?
My name is Leonard Fensom. Um, I own the property at twenty-two Buchanan Drive. And, uh, I came here as a young soldier and I bought this house in nineteen eighty-two, raising two girls who have now gone on to be productive members of society, proud of ODU graduates. One with a doctorate, the other one with a RN. I bought that house so that they could have a nice place to live. And these businesses are changing it. They're changing the neighborhood. My concerns are you've got two high volume businesses that are vying for that little small property. Now, Mayor, I understand you and Vice Mayor were out there. That area is just too small for two businesses of that magnitude. That's my opinion. I too enjoy Wawa and I too enjoy Chick-fil-A. But I do know that every Wawa and every Chick-fil-A that I've been to, they have lines, lines that you would not believe. I mean, you guys are from here, you know what I'm saying. The Chick-fil-A on Mercury Boulevard, but at least it closes on Sunday, you know? But the Wawa is going to be open twenty-four seven. You know, I supported that restaurant, uh, when it was, you know, when I was there as a young man, raising my kids. We went there every Thursday and we supported that restaurant. They were good neighbors. I just don't understand. My, I agree with Mr. Keller. There needs to be a viable business in that location. I too hate seeing that closed up building. However, I don't think Wawa is the answer. Two high, uh, businesses in that one small area. And then they're going to back up, take a house down. Someone spoke about Charles Barker Lexus. I can tell you, when they moved in, they made promises. No one would do test drives down that street. BMW said the same thing. But guess what? They do it. And I'm afraid that when Rich Neck Road opens up to Denby Boulevard, that is going to be a cut through because it was that way prior. In the evening at five o'clock, when people get off, they're looking for a quick way to get to Denby Boulevard. They can bypass that light on Denby Boulevard. They cut through right down Buchanan Drive, make the left on Rich Neck and go on down to Denby Boulevard. We witnessed that years and years ago. We tried to get something done. Police were out there for a while. So I, I ask that you, you seriously consider voting no because my house is right on Buchanan Drive. I'm the third house on the left as you leave Charles Barker Lexus. They, they have done the studies and of course, what I've heard is that everything they've done is to please the city council and to meet the requirements that they need to. However, when they, when that one exit coming out onto Buchanan Drive, there's nothing to stop people from making that right turn and going through, uh, Buchanan Drive.
Thank you, sir.
Now, I raised two daughters there. They rode their bicycles. They had a good time. They, I didn't have to worry about them on the bus. And I'm just going to say to council, if you vote for this, when a child gets run over out there because of the traffic, it's going to be on your head. Thank you very much.
Larry Todd? And thank you for everyone being respectful of the, of the time. We have about sixteen cards left.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've heard some very interesting things this evening. And mine is added to it because of safety, because of crime, and because of overpopulation of traffic. I was trapped out there in an accident that the police were working that took me an hour just to turn left. And I know that it's like a racetrack there because at thirty-five Buchanan sits right next to where the, uh, house that they're talking about tearing down. I strongly suggest utilize the gas station that you already have. Let them do their job instead of going against Wawa. I can tell you that if you go on Ward Boulevard, you get all you need to know about how Wawa is working and the police is over there all the time. If you bring that Wawa right there at Buchanan area, the police is going to be doing triple time to help keep safety over there. But I still say, we don't need another Wawa in that area. I thank you for my time.
Thank you. Jeremy Y.
Hi there. Jeremy Y. We came in home with a civil engineer for the project. Uh, address forty-five twenty-five Main Street, Suites one thousand, Virginia Beach. Just a couple items I would like to touch here. Um, heard from the crowd, uh, once about the lighting. I want to make sure that everybody knows, uh, City of Newport News have strict lighting requirements. So through the site plan review process, we had to make sure that we meet the lighting requirement the city has. Uh, they will not allow us to spill over on somebody else's property. So those ones are criteria that we had to meet. So that process, during the site plan process, we'll make sure that we meet the lighting requirements. Uh, the other item I want to touch, I think Steve Mead already talked about it, drainage. Uh, we worked with closely with city drainage engineer, uh, when this project came out. And, uh, one of the thing that we talked about is how we're going to handle the site drainage, uh, how we're going to design it when we come in, putting a Wawa and Chick-fil-A. So the current condition right now, you know, is draining through the Buchanan. Most of the site right now is draining through Buchanan. Buchanan has no underground storm sewer system in place as far as nearby the site or downstream of the site. So what city drainage engineer has asked us to look at is collect all the stormwater on site when we develop the property and either use underground system or above ground system to where that we had to detain the runoff from the site. And we have to meet, everybody have to understand this too. Every time we designed the site, we had to make sure the drainage meet the DEQ regulation as well as City of Newport News drainage requirements. So what we decided to do is we go and collect the runoff on site, store them and make sure that the release rates from the site leaving the site is not more than what the existing condition right now. So once we collect the water and go through the system, we will pipe it to the storm sewer system on Jefferson right in front of Advance Auto. I just wanted to clear out, make sure everybody understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Moreland?
Hello, I'm Diana Moreland. I live at twenty-six Buchanan Drive. My husband and I bought the property in two thousand and one when I moved here for a job. Um, our property will actually be quite affected by the Wawa. We currently live, our next door neighbors are the Lexus dealers. And so when I speak about not bringing a Wawa, I also want to note that I worked at a Sheetz when I lived in Pennsylvania and those places are open twenty-four seven. Yes, we tried, they tried as a Sheetz employee. We tried to keep things clean. We tried to do that. But there is going to be light pollution, especially with a six foot wall fence. And I've looked at the recent changes to what they were planning on doing. Uh, that light pollution will be directly in front of my yard. It'll affect the prices of our homes and my neighbors. They're looking at being in the backyards of my neighbors. Um, Wawa's are open twenty-four seven. There are places that are not open twenty-four seven. The Lexus dealer is not open twenty-four seven and yet we even get sound pollution. We had to go over and ask the Lexus dealer to change off the, change their security sound lighter because my dog was freaking out every time a cat walked across the Lexus dealer and the alarm went off and you could hear it in the far part of our house. We can still hear that alarm if we are outside. And so I just ask that we do not pass this. Uh, my neighbors, um, are here. We do have plenty of gas stations and Wawa, though I understand that it is a wonderful company, I worked for Sheetz, which is a very similar company. It just is not place, a place that should be in a neighborhood and the design is placing it in our neighborhood. It is placing it farther back off of Jefferson and really on to Buchanan. It would be in my front yard, um, in a lot of ways. And again, I bought this house and this neighborhood and I looked at this neighborhood because I found community here and I, I thought that this was a wonderful place to live. I looked at who was my neighbors and who was there and I just felt at home. I, so I really ask that you vote no on allowing the Wawa. Thank you.
Thank you. Payman Nadimi?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Payman Nadimi, real estate project engineer with Wawa, two sixty West Baltimore Pike, Wawa, Pennsylvania. I won't take much time. I know, uh, you guys have many more speakers ahead of you. Just want to address a couple of items that were raised. Uh, first about the number of employees at a typical Wawa. So a typical Wawa does employ about forty people. And I know that's hard for people to believe we're a convenience store. But we're not just a convenience store. We're also a food, you know, we're known for our hoagies, for our coffee. So because of that, we have that many employees. And all these employees are corporate employees. It was mentioned earlier, we're not a franchise organization. So they're all company owned stores. These are company employees and they all take advantage, have access to full benefits that I mentioned earlier in my presentation. 401K, medical. We have some associates who've been with our company for over thirty years. Again, something very unusual in the convenience business. But because we treat our associates so well, they stay with us that long. Second item I want to address was security and safety. Uh, there were a number of comments made about that. Nothing is more important to Wawa than the safety and security of our associates and our customers. That's very serious for us. We want to make sure everyone that visits us, everyone that works with us, works in a safe environment. Wawa has a standard operating procedure, training for all our associates on emergencies, on de-escalation policies, on how to prevent, uh, the circumstances that allow for crime to vesser. We have well-lit stores that prevent crime. All of our stores have state-of-the-art security systems that help deter- All of our stores have state-of-the-art security systems that help deter crime as well. So, a combination of all this, we try to do as much as we can to address the safety and security issue. With that, I'm open to any questions that council members may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Robinson.
Good evening. I live at one thirty-one Taswell Road. Um, I've been in the neighborhood, uh, just about going on eight years. And, uh, this is gonna be a major, major impact. Uh, the noise, the traffic, already there's noise and traffic, but it's gonna be doubled with these two high-volume businesses, um, trying to come here. I mean, have they even considered another location? Uh, there's land for sale at Atkins, Atkinson Boulevard and Jefferson. All they would have to do is take down some trees. So, I mean, I was wondering with, you know, why not move it further up Jefferson? Why this location, this small location? Yeah, it's gonna be major. So, uh, I'm totally against it.
Thank you. So, some of these cards that I have are duplicates. So, if I call you and you've already spoke on E4, just sort of stay down there. Uh, Kenneth Banks.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Counsel. Uh, my name is Kenneth Banks. I live at sixteen Buchanan Drive on the corner of Prince Wim and Buchanan. I've lived there forty years. I see every day, I'm fortunate to be retired. I see every day cars coming through there, forty, fifty miles an hour. We have kids that walk in that neighborhood at five-thirty in the morning. When they open that Wawa, twenty-four hours a day. You know, we should be, you know, we talking about Wawa and Chick-fil-A. We should be talking about these children's safety. The elderly people, me being one of them, who walk, I walk five miles a day up and down Jefferson Avenue, Rich Neck Road. They were talking about the water buildup. Right along, right before you get to Seven Eleven, there's a ditch line that runs through our neighborhood down past Prince Wim. I'd never see any stormwater trucks cleaning that ditch line up. The houses in the, in the horseshoe in Prince Wim. When I say you can jump off of your deck into the water and swim, you can do that. So, we're sitting here talking about a gas station versus children, old people, me being one, and crime. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Latricia Brown.
Good evening, Councilman, Mayor.
Good evening.
I am Latricia Brown and I reside at nine Princess Anne Circle. Uh, I am a newly retired Newport News Public School, uh, teacher assistant, twenty years. And I've been in this room before. Uh, my question tonight is that if, if I were to ask any one of you or any one of them, would they live in our neighborhood with the Wawa?
No.
What would your answer be? When you think about your neighborhood and where you live and where you dwell, when you go home to lay down, my house, the only thing that separates my house from the Lexus dealer is a fence. I always make a joke, I said, one day maybe I just take the fence down and I have new car. I'm just kidding. But, I live in Coltsac and I walk my puppy, I'm newly retired. Uh, and the safety, the crime, right now, the, at the Lexus dealer, when those lights come on at night, the security lights, it's right in my house. Right in my house. The noise, it is going to be unbearable. My other question is, if this is passed, and I've thought about this thing, I've prayed about this thing, I heard prayer, I've been right here in this room and have done open, uh, prayer for the meeting. If this thing passed, my request is that you would have Chick-fil-A and Wawa to make our community, community, a gated community. You will put something up there that there's no through fare because it's going to be, okay? I see the kids, I walk my dog, I see the kids when they get off the bus. Some, and I've driven back and forth from Princess Anne Circle right here to John Marshall and to, uh, Magruder before it became the STEM school. I told them it was gonna tear down, they didn't believe me. But, anyway, um, I've made that drive, okay? Dedicated every day from Denby, downtown Newport News, to come to work, okay? I don't rest. I just retired, I hurt my leg and I had to retire. So, my question is to them, would you live in our neighborhood with the Wawa on the corner, with the Chick-fil-A on the corner? Would you live, would you live in our neighborhood? You have no idea of the traffic right there at Jefferson Avenue, how many accidents. I'm telling you, it's not going to work. I'm not moving. And I will, I will say it in front of you and them, I will not support them. I'm not gonna go to Wawa, I'm not gonna buy Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A is right over the overpass, right there on Jefferson Avenue, right by the mall. It's right there, okay? It's, it's gonna be crazy. The traffic, when there's an accident and people come around, they come through our neighborhood. They're gonna, they are gonna come. There's plenty, there's a, uh, a gas station that's closed right up the street. Go up the street just a little further. When the, uh, Mexican restaurant was there at Plaza Azteca, the, the clientele was different. What am I saying? Family, I went there. People come, they're, they are purposeful and intentional. They're there to eat their dinner and go home. These people that come through Wawa, these people that's coming through Chick-fil-A, they're not purposeful. They come to get gas, they're gonna check out the neighborhood. I live alone. Like I said, there are elderly people there and I'm gonna protect myself. I'm telling you, cuz they, they don't know we even back there.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
So, God bless you.
Thank you. Alejandra Johnson.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. Um, uh, I live across from Latitia. I live in front of Curtis, uh, Majors. And when he was speaking on that drainage and how he got flooded, uh, Curtis live on two lots. There's two lots behind me and I live on two lots. When they got flooded, Curtis got flooded, I got flooded. That's six lots. That water problem out there has been terrible for years. I've been out there for thirty years and it's ridiculous. So, you put a Wawa there, it's gonna take more water. The other people you've seen, they live, gonna be behind Wawa, they're gonna get flooded too. Because it's not no fix for the drainage. And I just wanna say this, this family owned the house that belonged behind the Aztec restaurant. They owned it, they own it, and they fixed it up. And I'm just amazed, they fixed it up and had a new family living in that home. That family is gone. Because why? I, one thing I ain't heard anybody say, greed. This is about greed. You displace a family in a nice neighborhood? Really? Over money? Everybody who lived in that neighborhood supported that restaurant. And this is what you do to us? You put our lives in danger? I mean, I lived there because I love, I can leave my door unlocked. I don't have to worry about nobody breaking in. We don't have a whole bunch of young kids and young teenagers living in there. So, we don't live, if I was a cop, that's where I wanna work. That's the area I wanna be in, if I was a cop. And let me tell you something, uh, we don't have that kind of problem out there. None at all. And I think it's just, it's just a tragedy that they would pick this place to do this for. You know, it's not, it don't make any sense. You know what I mean? Like they said, there's a, there's a whole bunch of land right, right after, before you cross the track to get the dog this chicken. It's old land over there. Wawa wanna build, go down there. There's less traffic, there's less traffic. Let me tell you, to, to turn into, to try to get to the, uh, Advance Auto, you gotta get in the left lane. If you got Chick-fil-A, Wawa sitting here, the traffic is already, already coming from Fort Eustis and York County. They coming in the evening, you can't, you'll be there forever. You gonna retire. Cuz you will be there for a long time. If you wanna turn, if you wanna get in the bank, you gotta wait. You gotta wait, it is terrible, you know? And now that you fixing Rich Neck, um, that's the traffic that's coming. We got the people that wanna go down Denby. They got to use Jefferson. There's no, uh, y'all didn't fix something for the other people to be able to, like, in the evening to go to turn down Denby? So, in the afternoon, that traffic is backed up from Denby all the way to Rich Neck Road. All the way, in every afternoon, every. And like I said, you can go and retire. If you leave your house between three-thirty and six o'clock, you might as well go on and just stay right there. You'll be there for awhile. It's ridiculous, it's ridiculous how the traffic is. And the water is ridic, uh, we have never, I mean, your engineers came out and they seen it. They seen my land, they came out and look at my land, how that, how the water had come into my land from where Curtis Major live at. He said, I could see it. Yeah, I said, hey, that, that's six lots.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Japan Yoshi.
Good evening, sir.
Apologies if I messed that up.
No, that's my name.
Alright, awesome.
Good evening. Um, I wanna speak everything what already, everybody have stated, but, uh, you already, everybody have heard, same issue. I don't wanna repeat the same issue over and over because us, I'm totally against a Wawa. I wanna to support neighborhood and I wanna tell everybody that whoever neighborhood have a support on election and give a vote to everybody, please support them. Do not break their trust. They have trust in you guys. Right now, all the Wawa and this business is rely on you guys in here. So, please support neighborhood, don't break their trust because we have a lot of election coming in future and they don't, they don't wanna break, they don't wanna break their trust and don't wanna go against of anybody. So, please, support neighborhood, stop Wawa, and stop Chick-fil-A. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Luther.
Evening, Ron Luther. Twenty-nine Prince William Road, Newport News. I would say at Denby Boulevard, the, the intersection of Denby Boulevard and Jefferson Avenue is arguably the most heavily-used intersection in Newport News. Now, uh, Buchanan Drive is located one red light or nine-hundred-and-fifty feet from Denby Boulevard. You take, uh, intersection that's used that heavy and put something on the corner nine-hundred-and-fifty feet away, it has a big, uh, footprint as a, the Wawa, it's not gonna work. I mean, it, it stands to reason. Something that creates traffic like it does and put it a hundred-and-fifty, or nine-hundred-and-fifty feet away from the heaviest intersection in Newport News, does that sound right? There are times, well, Jefferson Avenue is an eight-lane road, including the left land, left turn lanes on Jefferson Avenue. That's eight lanes. There are times when traffic is backed up three lanes all the way to Buchanan. I can't get out on Jefferson. Say, something happened to me or one of my neighbors. We had to get to Marion Macklin Hospital, which is a mile and a half away. If we get on Jefferson, we can't get down to Denby to make the left to get to Marion Macklin. It takes so long. I have the right to get healthcare in, in a, in a good amount of time, you know? Uh, it shouldn't be like this, but this doesn't happen a lot. But, you put a Wawa right there, it makes it even worse. It's like putting a noose around us. It's, you, you're slowly strangling the community. You know, that you can just put so much traffic there. Uh, and there's times, you, you let Interstate sixty-four back up a little bit. People see that, they come off of Interstate. And where are they gonna exit? Fort Eustis Boulevard. And where are they going to go then? They either go to Warwick or Jefferson. We're pinned in completely then. I mean, there's just so much traffic that can be put in this one little spot. A Wawa is fine if you put it someplace where it, where it can take the footprint. Where you trying to put it right now, it cannot take that bigger footprint on this little bitty corner. And i- if you did approve the Wawa, there's gonna be times it redirects traffic through Buchanan, down Rich Neck, to, uh, MacIntosh Elementary School, which is located one-hundred-and-fifty feet off of Rich Neck Road, two-hundred feet off of Jefferson. Can you imagine the turmoil it's gonna create at that intersection right there, right in front of the school? I mean, you got buses coming in with children trying to offload them. You got, uh, parents bringing their children to school in their own vehicles. Terrible. They're gonna create a chaos there, chaos this, and we only have those two exits to get on Jefferson Avenue. You could just block up so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Razik Patel.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Um, I am a small business owner on Jefferson, one-two-nine-six-one. Uh, you guys already heard numerous, people already complained about Wawa and traffic and everything. Uh, I just don't support Wawa. Um, it's just, it's just like everybody says, will bring more traffic to the area, more crime, more alcohol, uh, profanity. So, I just don't agree bringing Wawa to the location. Thank you.
Thank you. Harry Atkinson.
Yeah, do it again. Um, first, I'm gonna speak on drainage, you've already heard this, but let me throw back into history. Hannah Wright's area, if you dig down two feet, you'll hit clay. And the reason that is, is highly, a whole bunch of clay there. My great-grandfather bought property there when he was kicked out by the government off Mulberry Island from his brickyard. And he was gonna start a brickyard there. But, he was killed in a car accident. One of probably three cars on the road back then in the time, cuz there wasn't many. Newport News only had a couple officers, I was Warrick County back then. But, that's the reason drainage is so bad. Where drains, and they say they're gonna mitigate drainage by storing it and everything else. That's fine. It sounds real good. Till you talk to the people that live behind KC BMW. All that was said when they built that. You talk to them, every time it rains, their backyards flood. It's, they can't go out. There's a couple inches of water in their backyards. Where the water flows, this is all the water from Jefferson Avenue, comes down Buchanan, it then turns on Prince Wim. It either goes to right or to the left down to Taswell, or to, to the right over to Cumberland. And it floods out Taswell where the one culvert is. And that takes it down to Stony Run. Stony Run runs all the way behind my property. City hadn't cleaned it out twenty years. I know I caught. Cuz we sold Stony Run to the city so we wouldn't be responsible for flooding. That's why I know. So, something has to be done. It took me five years to get the city to open up the VDOT drainage ponds that were set up where the old railroad tracks used to go across Jefferson Avenue, Patrick Henry Hosp- Hospital with the military. I got them finally to set those back up and take them over for the city to stop the flooding. Some of it, it mitigated Stony. But, the other thing is I have two grandchildren live in the neighborhood. They walk to school at zero dark thirty to pick up that bus. There are people flying through here, especially when the Wawa gets built. The Wawa is a nice store, but do you want one of them in your neighborhood? Cuz they attract, the customers they attract at that time of night, like my mama said, you're out past nine o'clock, ain't nothing, no good going on. And you got drunk drivers coming through, all sorts of things, especially early in the morning. There's no place for the children to be. They walk down the road, they ride the bikes down the road. It's a quiet neighborhood. Nobody even knew that neighborhood's here until we have these meetings. It's a very quiet neighborhood. I thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Our last card on E4 is James Thomas. Okay? Uh, I don't... You say, "Can you speak?" Yes, please, sir.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sanketacharya. I'm here to support all the business owners. And I have three to four points. The first point is this. When you have to build a gas station, you have to raise the ground. And you have to put a three big tank, one for regular, one for premium, and one for diesel. Average Wawa pump a day, more than ten thousand gallon. Average gas station per day, pump one thousand to two thousand gallon. When you get a delivery for the gasoline, you need a big tanker. It's eighty-four hundred gallon in one tanker. So when you build a Wawa, you need average two tanker a day, and that's an eighteen-wheeler. Second thing, why the Wawa won't be there in that location? Because Wawa look for the property like this, a depressed property. It's, so it's easy to build on it, and it's cheap. So when they build a property and put a big store, it's easy for them to sell it. They don't make money in running gas station. They make money in selling it. So probably cost them four to five million dollar to build a gas station. But they sell it for six, seven, eight thousand, even without opening a door. So they already make three to four million dollar. So that's the reason they're looking for a property. It's, normally when I see Wawa building, they don't look for a gas station or close down gas station because it's going to cost more money to build. So they're not going to go in there. Because property value is higher on gas station, so they're not going to buy that type of property. Second thing is, when they're going to raise the ground, the water has to go somewhere. There is a flooding problem already. And they have to raise the ground because if they're not going to raise the ground, the water's going to go to the tank. I own gas station, I know the water, we have to raise. Sometime when the property goes, started sinking, we have to raise it again. And those are big, big tank. Those are more than ten to fifteen thousand gallon tanks. Three tanks are sitting underground. And now the, when you build a Wawa like that, right? So normally, gas station have four to five employee. Seven-Eleven has a nine to ten employee. Wawa has a forty employee. That means they're doing ten times more business than normal gas station, a normal Seven-Eleven, four times more than Seven-Eleven. Average customer, they bring per day, twenty-five hundred to three thousand customer Wawa brings. A Chick-fil-A brings about twelve to fifteen hundred customers a day. So it's going to increase more traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Come on.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Dick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, seven-zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Come on.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I do want to just say, I just thank everyone for being able to come out to share on both sides. For me, I do understand the plight about the water from the residents. However, I do believe moving forward for me with this project is that that is a separate issue that I don't know for what reason has not been resolved way before this has come, this project conversation has come. And so that's one thing I just wanted to clarify. Also, just looking at the fact that, yes, you know, in life, all of us, some things, some businesses we like, some businesses we do not like. You know, being a part of the council and seeing the uproar and people not wanting a Walmart coming to the South District because it was something that they, some people were against, some people for. They were concerned about the traffic. We rectified the problem. Now we are successful with having people enjoy the Walmart. Because so many times, and trust me, I'm not discounting what you all are saying. I'm just saying that sometimes we can get projects in that once we do mitigate what we've heard from the citizens, it becomes a successful project. And so for me, I do understand what people are saying, but I think we need to look at some of the issues, particularly as it involves the water, the extra water, separate from the rezoning. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I want to echo my colleague. I felt the same way. I think some of the issues that was brought here is a part of already the area with the drainage. And I think I heard the stormwater was going to be improved for the area, as well as the cut-through. I think there is ways to address that. I don't think, I heard people already say there was already people driving through it, so that's not going to change. But I think there's ways that we can address the cut-through scenario. We do have processes here in the city with the speed hump evaluation. I think it's a great opportunity to take a vacant property and turn it into a vibrant area. As was mentioned, that a gas station could go there without coming forward with proffers. And I think some of the proffers that are being brought to the city are going to add some value to that area. So I'm in support of that as well.
Is there any more discussion? I have comments, but I'll go last. I want to make sure everyone else has a chance to speak on it. Okay. First of all, I want to say, in no particular order, thank you to Planning Department and staff for the work that went into this. Thank you to the Freeman family for the risk that she wanted to take in her, for private investment. Thank you to the small business owners who are already here, who took out, you know, their time out of Valentine's Day to come down. I appreciate everyone. I want to say thank you to the Planning Commission. Most people don't know this, but local government, you know, the decisions that are made when it's a six-one or a five-two vote, those are very easy. A four-three vote is very difficult, and that's what Planning Commission recommended to us. In my mind, there are sort of three things that I'm going to take a look at, or taking a look at is, number one, I believe that we already have too many gas stations on that road. Number two, I believe that the addition of another gas station will bring into question the safety of that community. Additionally, I think this is not a Wawa question. I believe this is a quality of life related to the neighborhood. And those are the metrics that I'm going to use to make my personal decision. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Against.
Mayor Jones?
Against.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Dick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Against.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, three, four-three.
Page one forty-six. Item E5 is request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit number Charlie Uniform dash two-zero-two-two dash zero-zero-zero-six to SK Holdings LLC. One sec, we're going to have order to allow for the operation of a restaurant with a drive-through adjacent to residential uses on a combined two-point-seven-nine acre parcel located at one-two-eight-four-one, twelve-eight-three-nine, and a portion of twelve-eight-three-five, Jefferson Avenue, Zone C1, retail commercial. The proposed use is consistent with the One City, One Future, 2040 Comprehensive Plan land use designation. On January eighteenth, 2023, City Planning Commission voted six-to-one to recommend approval of conditional use permit Charlie Uniform dash two-zero-two-two dash zero-zero-six with conditions. We have speakers at this time. Gene Keller?
Gene Keller, one of Six Prince William Road. I'm in favor of this conditional use permit, and I encourage you, councilmen and women, to vote in favor to. Chick-fil-A, if you'd, the diagram that they had for their, I'll say entrance and exit, they will not have a problem like we do with the cookout further on down the road of traffic backing up into Jefferson. They have a large, I'll say, roadway from the entrance off of Jefferson, and they direct the traffic around. And Chick-fil-A, they should be in charge of traffic control everywhere because they really know how to manage the traffic coming through there. With the two entrances coming off of Jefferson Avenue into the properties, that is going to alleviate a lot. I can't say there will never be, but it would be extremely rare for any traffic to be backed up onto Jefferson Avenue because they've got enough area in there. And the other thing, as I stated before, Chick-fil-A is an honorable and a vibrant business. And that's what we need for the area. So I encourage you to approve the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Yeah, and I have to say too, not only there, but in Hydenwood, the Chick-fil-A, of course, it is a vibrant business. But that Chick-fil-A too, that management they're able to contain within this space of, without allowing that traffic to hang out on Jefferson Avenue, I'm sorry, Ward Boulevard, they were to contain it right within the auspices of their property and manage getting those customers through. So the volume is manageable.
And they're at Yoder Plaza, you know, how they have their traffic managed through there, they know what they're doing. Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, I would like to make a motion for a five-minute recess just in case people would like to leave before the rest of the meeting.
Second. You have a second?
Second.
Moving seconded. Call the roll.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Dick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, seven-zero.
Thank you. We'll be back in five minutes. Thank you.
We're back in five minutes. Thank you.[186.45]
Able to support their families. We're asking for your support this evening to bring more opportunity, to bring better elements, and to inspire those around us to do the same in the Northern District of Newport News. We hope that you will invest in the belief that we can do more together as well. We want to continue to be positive, respectful, and purposeful people, stronger together. I want to just note that many years ago, two days before my niece Foffy was born, my mother was running a Stephen Johns. And that was in 1999. We got a phone call, I was with my sister and brother-in-law. She had been held up in the restaurant, a gun pointed to the bridge of her nose. There is crime. Bad things happen. We know very well. The police were to us in no time. The chief of police at the time was actually eating dinner, maybe five minutes before, this gentleman on drugs walked in and caused the ruckus that he caused. So we get that. And we get the drainage issues, but we just don't feel like we are a part of that. We are going to mitigate that. We've even offered our property that we're not developing, that we're pulling back the impact on to the city to use if they could do anything more with it to help solve any of the problems that the residents have brought up. We are willing to do that. So with everything that you've heard tonight, we appreciate your support and look forward to moving this forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, and while you're up here, Ms. Freeman, and I definitely, and other councilmembers probably will join me, to really, as we move forward with it, you know, really make this area, this neighborhood center stage on being able to know that we can mitigate the problems that the water, that has come way before this. Of course, nobody has all this solution to crime, but if there's enough things in place, we can do what we can to minimize it. But also with the lighting from the other auto dealerships, if that has been an issue, we can all work to try to make that better. So I hope that you will help us, you and your family, help us be able to make this a safe and viable project to everyone involved.
You have our guarantee of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth Banks? Latricia Brown?
Good evening again, Councilman and Mayor.
Good evening.
I'm here again. I'm fond of Chick-fil-A. I was living in Florida when I had my very first Chick-fil-A sandwich at the mall in Gainesville. And I'm fond of Chick-fil-A. I respect them, the fact that they close on Sunday, but I really don't want them in my backyard. I will say that Congresswoman Vick mentioned about the Chick-fil-A in Hydenwood. That Chick-fil-A is in a shopping center. It is not in a residence. So yes, they can control that in the shopping center. It's in a shopping center. It's not backed up against a residence. I appreciate you taking the time to hear us tonight. I'm not moving. And just, I won't support them. I will not go. I will not buy. I will not get gas. I'm a Dodgers fan. Catch that. So, but be it what it is, what it may, I will be back. I will request that the council will require them to make our community a gated community so that you will need a code to get in and out of there, because if they, if you don't live there, you don't need to be coming through. Okay? Make it a gated community. Protect us in some kind of way. Like I said, I live alone. I live alone. And not one of you, or one of you, would live in a neighborhood with a Wawa and a Chick-fil-A backed up against it. The one, my church was on Hoppersville, across from Farmers Market for seven years, on Hoppersville. There was a, and I told them that there would be a gas station coming on the corner, that they was going to tear down this open suds. I'm a prophet, okay? I see. Let me tell you something. That is not up against, that Wawa is not up against a residence. Okay? When you go to the Chick-fil-A's, they're not up against a residence. We're talking people. We're not talking dollars. There's plenty of property right up the road. What they're, what they really want is the neighborhood. I'm not moving. The people are not moving. They're not going to get it. They're not going to get it. They want the neighborhood. Okay? That's what they're, they want to change the whole dynamics of the neighborhood to make it all C1, commercial. When I had to get my buildings, I had to come down to the city, make sure that everything was in line, that it was enough parking, that it was, it was, all the codes and compliance and everything had to be taken care of. So I'm a little versed about some of that. Okay? I have worked with the city. I came here from Mississippi in 1990. Jefferson Avenue was beautiful. Trees lined down the road, absolutely beautiful. Trash now is all over the city, everywhere. Things are changing. And the more cement and mortar, brick and mortar you pull in, it's going to change. It's going to change. And the dynamic of our neighborhood is going to change. I don't care what you say, it's going to change. It is going to change. I live alone, but from this night on, I will not sleep alone. And I don't mean another person. And I'm serious, because nobody even know we're back there. They're going to change the dynamic of our neighborhood. Okay? People not just going to come in and just go do Chick-fil-A and leave, they're going to be curious. They're going to want to know what's back there. Okay? All over the city, trash everywhere. Everywhere. Things are changing, and I really hope that your eyes are open, that you just don't see the dollar sign, but that you see the quality of this beautiful city of Newport News, Virginia, that I made my home in 1990. And I have served, I have served this city very well. So please keep that in mind. I promise you, no Chick-fil-A no more, not just that one, none of them. No Wawas, none of them. And I will stick to my word.
Thank you, ma'am.
God bless you.
Thank you. Alledra Johnson? Sorry, the card is messed up. Lydia.
I want to say, Ms. Vick, I heard her say about the drainage, that we never complained about it. Well, let me say this to you, 15, 18 years ago, they hit the halfway house on Rich Neck Road. They tore that halfway house down. Some company wanted to come in and build apartment buildings. We met with your planning commission. They understood about our drainage. We ain't, this ain't our first time talking about this. We did this years ago. Spoke about how bad the drainage was. And they didn't build those apartments. They honored us by not bringing in those apartment buildings and making our area worse. This is not new. This is old. And we still waiting. Like I said, I've been there 30 years. We still waiting for the city to come in and fix our drainage. And now here, you're going to allow this to go? Now, they, Wawa saying that they're going to create jobs. Okay? How many companies in this city is looking for help? How many help signs you see running around here? And if you go to the Wawa in Yorktown, which I go quite frequently, you never hardly ever see the same people. Instead of switching, they always have new people working in that place. So they not creating jobs. Because a lot of people don't want to work. So look at all the businesses. I tried to go to Popeyes get some chicken. Ain't nobody was in there with the manager. How you creating job? People don't want to work. So you can't make them work just because you build the building, don't mean they going to come. They don't, they're not going to, you're just tearing up a neighborhood for what? Like I said, for what? Greed? For greed.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all the cards that I have. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Against.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Against.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carry, five two.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Page 189, minutes of the work session of January 24th, 2023. Page 207, minutes of the special meeting of January 24th, 2023. Page 210, minutes of the regular meeting of January 24th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items F1 through F3, all inclusive?
So moved.
Is, thank you. Is it moved and seconded? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Other city council actions. Next on our agenda, page 235, item G1, Madam Manager.
This is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute the First Amendment to lease between the City of Newport News, Virginia, and TSO Maritime LP for 19,896 square feet of space in the Maritime Square Building at 2600 Washington Avenue for the Seventh District Court Service Unit, and I recommend approval.
We have no speakers. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I wanted to ask, is this the long-awaited request for another courtroom?
No.
No, this is just a renewal for the.
Oh, it's, okay.
Newport Services, yeah, no, we're working on the courtrooms.
That's a long time request, I know.
But no, not a new bill right now, but we're working on them.
Okay, thank you.
Trying to accommodate them.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Page 242, item G2, Madam Manager.
Yes, this is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the formation of Choice Neighborhood Five Downtown LLC, Choice Neighborhood Six Downtown LLC, Choice Neighborhood Downtown Commercial Partners LLC, Choice Neighborhood Five Downtown Development Corporation, Choice Neighborhood Six Downtown Development Corporation, and Choice Neighborhood Downtown Commercial Partners Development Corporation by the Newport News Redevelopment Housing Authority, and I recommend approval.
We don't have any speakers, but Karen Wildes is here for questions only. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to say, if we continue to move our Choice Neighborhood forward and to be able to, I tell you, if you haven't been downtown on Jefferson in a while, you have to come and ride in the area to be able to see our new apartments. I feel so overjoyed, is the word, to be able to know that because of some of the old unsafe housing that we had, that we're, even though this is a new spot between 27th and 29th and Jefferson, no housing was there. But to be able to be overjoyed that the fact that new families will be able to be in clean, safe, decent, new housing, and that we will, we can say in the history of Newport News that we've been a part of it. Karen, I just want to thank you and your entire staff. It has been a Herculean task to be able to move residents from an old place with dysfunctional floor plans, I call it, if you don't mind, and to be able to, you know, keep in touch with them, to be able to transition to build new housing and stay in contact to be able to see if they want to come back. It's a Herculean task, but you all have mastered it well. And so I thank you, and I'm so excited to be able to support this tonight.
Any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Appropriations, page 249, item H, Madam Manager.
Yes, we have two items. The first is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $80,000 from the Newport News Sheriff's Funds for Correctional Purposes. And the second item is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $7,450,000 from the fiscal year 2023 bond authorization, community development category, in support of the Choice Neighborhood Initiative. I recommend approval of both items.
Thank you. We have no speakers. Is there a motion to approve items H1, H2, all inclusive?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I do have, I do want to know about the sheriffs. What, what did you say that was for?
Ma'am.
I believe it's radio equipment and portable ballistic shields.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments. Item I, citizen comments on matters germane to the business of city council. I will call each name in the order that it appears in front of me. We have about 16 cards, so we're going to make sure, we're going to make sure when the red light buzzes, the red light buzzes. Fair? All right. Rena Crable? Crable? Sorry. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
It may help to remember that my name rhymes with Tina Table, Rena Crable.
Appreciate it.
I'm Rena Crable, 422 Eastwood Drive. I'm here to speak about Riverview Farm Park, just to remind you that the citizens of Newport News are solidly behind the current plan and all the trails that are being built. I wanted to talk about one other thing. I know that in Richmond, there's some efforts to recognize spots that are in the Green Book or were in the Green Books that gave safe haven to African-Americans 50, 60, 70 years ago. I purchased a couple of these several years ago because I was curious, and there were some spots in Newport News that appeared in both of those books. And I think it would be an interesting effort if Newport News did some sort of recognition of these and maybe did a resolution to try to call out these places and, you know, let the people know about them. When I find these books again, I will copy the pages about Newport News for you and email them to you, but I don't have them on me currently. And as always, if you can support our neighbors who are less fortunate, please give to the food bank. Thank you.
Thank you. Efrem, or, yep, Efrem.
Efrem Rogasa. Good evening. I'm Efrem V. Rogasa. I currently reside near Beauchamp Drive along Warwick Boulevard in the Denby neighborhood. I want to address three transportation issues that I think the mayor and the city councils need to address and address immediately. Number one, public transit. It needs improvement. There's infrequent service, not only within the peninsula, but crossing Hampton Roads into Norfolk, Partsment, and Virginia Beach. For example, there are no service at all crossing Hampton Roads on the weekends. Buses are almost always late, but the number one reason why they are late is because of cars. They get stuck behind cars. Cars, not buses, cause traffic. Please study the feasibility of having dedicated bus lanes and frequent service. Number two, pedestrian infrastructure. It's terrible. Even on roads, it has supposed to be, 25 mile per hour cars are zipping faster than that. Many neighborhoods, there's no sidewalks, so we are forced to walk in the streets. Number three, bicycle infrastructure. It's nonexistent. There's absolutely no bicycle infrastructure here at Newport News. Just slapping a sign, share the road in Warwick Boulevard is not bicycle infrastructure, especially with cars and trucks going at 45 miles per hour. What there is plenty of are empty parking lots, unfriendly or even hostile places to walk, let alone bike, in very fragmented and disconnected neighborhoods. My request to you, Mr. Mayor, and to each council members is, I challenge each, each of you to take public transit to work, to church. I did. I took the bus here, HRT, Bus Route 106, and taking the bus to go back home. I challenge each of you to walk or bike to the grocery store, to the post office, to the restaurants. I challenge each of you to cross Warwick Boulevard and Jefferson Avenue on foot, because I guarantee you that many of your constituents do so every day to go to work or at school. You will find out immediately how very difficult it is. Additionally, it's hard to, it's hard to get to know your constituents when you're driving alone in a car, zipping by 45 miles per hour. Newport News is dense and compact enough to have a decent public transportation and a safe pedestrian bicycle infrastructure. Owning a vehicle is very expensive, and we have residents here that cannot afford a vehicle. And those that do are sometimes trapped in a cycle of debt, in a cycle of debt. If you are just, if you're just leaving scraps for public transport or non-car mobility options to your most, to your most underprivileged constituents, then I respectfully, then I respectfully believe that you're not doing your duty as a representative to all Newport News residents. Thank you for your time.
Sir, may I, may I speak? I would like to ask you to come to a Hampton Roads Transit Board meeting and speak the same, the same one, speech you just gave. They need to hear it from the citizens. I will relay what you have said, but I think it would be better if you would come and speak as well. And I'll be glad to give you what the schedule is.
Good to go, ma'am. Just give me the time and date, and I'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Akima Love?
Habaragani. This is Black History Month. It's a pleasure to meet you and everyone here. I'm new to Newport News and Hampton Roads, and I must say, with the few moments that I have, I'm exceedingly disappointed in homeless services, speaking specifically about Four Oaks. It is absolutely horrible. I have given time to, before the 1st of February, to deal with some issues, including to hold appropriate programs and events concerning Black History Month at the facility. No response. The supported programs, churches, overnight, whatever you call them, people have to wait hours after being picked up at 4:00, 4:30 in the afternoon. They don't get in till sometimes 8, 9 o'clock. One of the gentlemen is here who experienced that. You're dealing with middle-aged people, disabilities of all kind, and I'm sick of people calling us crazy. Okay? That's number one. And no one asks us what we want. They do everything for us like we're invalids, can't do, don't want to do. There is so much talent in this place. We don't consider that. And I did talk with Phyllis about whether or not you play chess.
I got the letter. I'll be there.
Uh huh, okay. So Quincy White is an avid chess player, as is, I ain't going to tell you how good or bad I am, just have to find out, but we need to do something exciting. The people need to live, and we all have ideas. And my major project is, let's get some buses by way of the churches, and let's take homeless people to Oprah Winfrey's studio or soundstage at Tyler Perry's studio, so we can have the great debate sit across the table from homeless service providers, and let's talk about this and put in place what's going to work for us. The homeless population in the nation is overrepresented by us, but not in terms of providing the solutions. When we had our Black Wall Streets, beginning with Tulsa, there was no homelessness. We didn't have gang bang. So why reinvent the wheel? Why not take this blueprint and start here? And I took the liberty to rename Four Oaks. Emancipation Oak, Gatland. Remember Greenwood, Archer, and Pine? And I think every shelter needs to be reflect, of a hub reflective of the over 300 black-owned businesses, 40 square blocks. We're not even talking about the cities that have been drowned. And we need to stop this foolishness. Now, the reason why I'm not cussing is because I did all my cussing out there.
We appreciate it. And, and you're welcome. You're welcome.
You can thank God for that one.
Tell Quincy I'll be there.
And I sing. I sing. I play chess. I do a million things.
Okay.
Everyone I know does something. It brings tears to my heart and to my eyes. And I think that my name, Acoma, is actually the African Odenka symbol for the heart, an ancient symbol. Valentine's has actually stolen that symbol. In the middle of Black History Month, we're celebrating not us. And I think with the problems that we have within our community.
I hear you, ma'am. I don't, I don't, I don't cut you off. It's been three minutes, but thank you.
Okay, all right. I didn't even see the light.
No, I know. No worries. Don't worry. I see the red.
But look, and thank you, the challenge, the chess challenge.
I will be there next Wednesday to help Quincy to play chess.
Next Wednesday?
Okay.
You heard that.
I'll be there next Wednesday. Thank you, ma'am.
Play that back.
Thank you.
We want to know who wins. And anybody else is welcome too.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. We got you, ma'am. Thank you, thank you. Clayton Dillard? Clayton? Okay. Michael Bartley? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir. Oh, no, you're in five, five more names. Michael Bartley?
Yes.
Sir?
I'm Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you for giving me time. I spoke last time we were here, and one of the things that was said was, we wanted people to come with solutions, not with problems. And I know that we had a lot of problems we were talking about at the last meeting. I'm trying to come with a solution to having poor elected officials that are not representative and people don't like, and I believe that ranked choice voting is a very good system to help with that. Now, I do have a quote from October 18th of last year. "I believe that ranked choice voting is the future of elections in America. It will allow us to preserve democracy by limiting behavior that only appeals to one base," by Philip Jones.
I stand by those statements.
Okay. So we actually have an interesting opportunity right now because Virginia just passed a law, and the bill, the law is actually 24.2-673.1. And that allows, and I actually printed it out, and it actually allows a little less than I thought it does, it allows city councils and county boards of supervisors to have ranked choice voting for their bodies. And, and so it would say, and B, it says, "Elections of members of county boards and[1681.58] supervisors or city councils may be conducted by ranked choice voting pursuant to this section. The decision to conduct an election by ranked choice voting shall be made in consultation with the local electoral board and general registrar by majority vote of the supervisors or city councils of the office being elected services." So I think that that will be a really good start to set an example on, for our elections for city council to be ranked choice voting. Furthermore, in the House of Delegates presently, each, a House Bill seventeen fifty-one would extend that to school boards. And I really hope that we could get that. And so for people who don't know what ranked choice voting is, right now you vote for someone, and whoever gets the most of the whole list gets to win the office. But that doesn't mean that they're the most popular. They might get thirty-five, forty percent. If there's enough people, maybe twenty-five, twenty percent. And so you don't necessarily get a good representation when you have lots of people wanting it, and, and you get a lot of negative campaigning. So if you can say, "I want this person first, I want this person second, I want this person third," you have to get fifty percent plus one vote. That way, if your number one is last, they're removed, and then your number two choice goes on. If they're removed, your number three choice goes on until someone gets fifty percent plus one. It really will help us get better elected officials, and I think that we can set a proper example by having the city council try and move this forward. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. I do have a question. Who's the, who's the patron for that, the bill in the House?
I don't remember.
Okay.
It was not a local person because I didn't recognize them.
Okay, no worries. Thank you. Ginny Brown?
Good evening, distinguished council members and Mayor Jones. We stand before you today, servants of our community and the nonprofit Historic Hilton Village, Inc., supporting the Greater Hilton community for over forty years. One month ago, we celebrated the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, naming Hilton Village Main Street as one of ten mobilization cohorts for 2023. Hilton Village Main Street is on a fast track for national Main Street designation, a huge honor. This drive is not new to our Hilton community. Through community outreach, architecture, and preservation programs, festivals, and parades, Newport News residents attend by the thousands, year after year. Our efforts are privately funded and a testament to what can be done with very little. While attending the Main Street America National Conference in March of 2022, it became clear to us that Historic Hilton Fire Station Number Three, preservation and revitalization efforts should be our first project after sitting vacant for over a decade. We began strategically building partnerships that allow the opportunity to work side by side with the active fire department, the local firefighters' union, and the Retired Firefighters Association present tonight. The stakeholder feedback generated in the Greater Hilton Area Survey expanded our project plan. We seek to use this space responsibly under the Main Street model, providing programs and opportunities for our entire community. For example, sixty-six percent of respondents to the Greater Hilton Area Survey wanted a farmer's market, and HHV, Inc. launched this farmer's market in January of 2023 for fifty-one weeks of the year, with five hundred people in attendance weekly, even in the snow and twenty-one degree temperatures. The fire station would allow for the expansion of our successful and thriving market. With a co-shared working station upstairs, executive office space for HHV, Inc. and the firefighters' union, we have also been in discussion with the Newport News Green Foundation to move their intermediate office into this structure. This would be a space of benefit to our merchant district by supporting microeconomic development and tourism, serving the city as a hub for small business, historical resources, and support. The Department of Historical Resources wants to work with us to serve Newport News as a center for historical designation applicants. In addition, our plan includes a small business incubator for preparing businesses to transition into a physical storefront space. A coffee shop pop-up has expressed interest in being our first incubator business. As for grand openings, we have successfully assisted nine new businesses in 2022 and two in 2023. Our partnerships have allowed us to understand the importance of preserving the legacy of public service in our community. Our plan includes a rotation of curated historical displays and impactful fire science education initiatives. The bays of the Historic Fire Station provide flexible indoor/outdoor space hosting community outreach. In an effort to responsibly manage artifacts, we have partnered with CNU and the Luter Business School to utilize a student intern every semester to assist us with project development. We have been pursuing this great space, this historic structure.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. Just, it's, the clock went red.
But I did want to ask.
Perfect.
You, because I have talked with you and about this, and you shared your concerns about moving it forward because of the fact that you don't have site control of the property.
Correct.
Or, because now we have it as the city.
Yes.
And so you are not able to access the grant dollars because you don't have access. So Madam Manager, can you speak to this as far as how can we, with the admiration and the vibrancy of the volunteers that want to help us with this, how, what can we do to move this forward, particularly at a point where they have potential access to five hundred thousand dollars that could start renovating the old firehouse?
I would be happy to address it. As you may know, we have been working on the Hilton Plan, and I believe that has been shared with the group, that we need to, that's a community outreach piece too, where they have been looking at what they would like to see in terms of the future of Hilton. We're asking, because we have done it in the past, we have had community groups, and they each have a different vision. So we thought it would be important to go ahead and have the plan and bring something to council, and then that's the foundation for us to operate, to make recommendations. There is, there would be substantial costs involved with renovating it from what we have seen. We have gotten different ideas from the community, how they would like to see it be utilized. So we want to pull all that together, bring everybody to the table as part of the plan, and we'll bring that back to council.
May I address her comments?
So, can you, can you speak to the timeline? Well, because my thing is, after meeting with the group and talking to many of the citizens, and not only that, seeing the work that you all have already started to do and the results of the farmer's market, that has been wonderful, the citizens have enjoyed it, the small businesses have been able to capitalize on the number of people who come and support them on the weekends. And so I, I do understand about the study, and you, and you addressed some of the study piece, and the fact that your organization has addressed what's on the study.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just, I'm just concerned that, that why would we want to not work with this organization and, and lose the money or a potential benefit of the grant funding that does not have to be paid back and, and to help them move forward with this? Since they've already addressed some of the things from the study.
I believe they have requested to have a meeting at some point.
We've been requesting since March of 2022.
And not with the meeting with me.
We've been speaking with Owen Miller since.
Owen Miller's from my office, and he has provided information to them about the plan and the direction that the city was looking to go into with Hilton.
May I address the city manager's comments about the plan? In nineteen ninety-eight, the city plan for Greater Hilton Area allowed for the partnership with the Main Street America Organization and a full-time executive director at over eighty thousand dollars allocated. It took twenty-two years and a private nonprofit to make this come to fruition. I cannot imagine us sitting another decade waiting for this structure to have new life and to give honor and respect to the public servants who have served our community for so long. I also think that the grant applications can be tailored to the programming that she is speaking of when it comes to the citizen feedback. There is so much flexibility and so many grants available through the Main Street network that we really are in a time crunch to make this happen for 2023.
Right. So is there any way, because that's what I'm concerned, and I don't mean to go on and on, but I, but I think this is very important, particularly when you have people, you know, not just having access to money, but access to, to money that can help something that so many people support. So is there any way that they can get a meeting with you?
Absolutely.
Within the time constraints? Because what, the grant, they need to hear from you at least by March of 2023?
So our applications are due, many of them in April. But if we do not have site control, we cannot even entertain bringing people into the structure to assess the true damage and what is necessary. We really need site control in order to do that and are prepared to sign a lease with the city for one dollar for five years to establish the full plan and to bring that to the city yearly with updates and measurable progress.
I'm just asking for a meeting.
Well, I would just like to say, I understand what you're saying, but we also have to look, the city manager has to look at the whole Hilton. I mean, we spent three years on that plan, and I, just to dismiss it and give you a building, I don't think it's smart, but I, I do encourage you to meet with the city manager and see what the other plan is for Hilton and, and for the, that area, because it was a very good plan, and I don't want to see any of it dismissed. So I would just say, it sounds like to me, communication is necessary.
Ms. Woodbury, I will say that five hundred and nine people responded to the Greater Hilton Area Survey, two hundred and twenty-two of them living and identifying as being residents of the Greater Hilton Area. We have taken their feedback into consideration for this plan, and as a private organization, we have the flexibility that the city does not always have to move things forward at a rapid pace.
Well, I appreciate that, and I thank you for saying it, but I also know you are a private organization, that is my point. But we are a public, and Hilton is public, and there is a plan, and there is, there are going to be some other plans. So I think communication is what I'm saying, is what we need, and I, I can't see us just giving a building to a different organization without a plan that we have had some input in.
I can respect that, and I will say that as far as communication goes, our organization has either reached out in person by coming to City Hall monthly, and also via email and phone calls with representatives from the tenth floor. We have overcommunicated and have been told so by this point.
I can, I can jump in here. So thank you so much for the comments. I think next step would make sense is that you don't leave here tonight unless there's a meeting booked.
Right.
And I think we can do that from the staff. And whether it's in a week or two weeks or something, I think that's sort of next step from my perspective.
That's what I said.
And for your district. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. John Isom?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is John Isom. I grew up in Newport News. I'm a graduate of Warwick High School, and I've been living at Horse Pen Road in the Demby Plantation area for, since two thousand and eight. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here tonight to oppose a section of the planned scenic trail for the nature walk at Riverview Farm Park. Just a section of it, specifically the section proposed trail through the Flax Mill Creek Woods area. It's a, it's a part of that loop that is proposed. I know you guys have seen the aerial shots of it. To me, the scenic overlook part in park in general is a great idea. I think most people also think so. It's a good use of valuable and unique property until people can figure out what to do with the, with the, with the farm. Like the other folks here, the Ferguson's, the Lanes, who spoke last, last time you guys met, many others are not here tonight, but who have signed a petition against the nature trail because our property backs up to that creek. We know it's back there, meaning we know what we can see back there. I don't know if you guys have ever walked that area. I have, our kids have. It's a mix of private property on one side. There's an old dump on the other side, which is up against the sewage treatment plant, and there's a ditch in between, drainage ditch, it's basically a stormwater drainage ditch. What's in that area is stuff like busted up concrete, twisted rebar, rusted cylinders, things that used to contain, you know, who knows what, half-buried chain link fence, and that's just the stuff that's above ground that we can see. Now, we're talking about part of this planned nature walk next to the sewage treatment plant. Who knows what's beneath the surface there? By definition, a nature walk is the use of public lands to serve an essential role in preserving natural resources. A trust established to protect wildlife habitats, clean water, and clean air environments while providing tranquil space for current and future generations. Imagine what that trail is going to look like or be like when on one side you've got the sound of machinery churning waste on one side, and a view into the drainage ditch on the other side. And if you look up, you see the backyards and windows of people's residences, ours. People out there, our dogs will be barking at the people walking, the people mowing their lawns, leaf blowers going, all kinds of noise. This is not a nature trail. It's not the definition of that. So the point of all this is we're asking the city council to change its course and direct HRSD to reallocate a portion of the budgeted millions of dollars away from the Flax Mill Creek Nature Trail and towards something that all of us in the city of Newport News can enjoy more. Something like a bike path. An idea would be a bike path around the Riverview Farm Park area. If anybody's walked that two-mile loop, sharing the bike path with walkers, or, excuse me, walkers sharing with bikers, I think everybody in agreement that ever, whoever walks that would agree that a separate bike path would be fantastic allocation of, of resources.
Thank you, sir.
It would be a big win.
We appreciate it.
Too much time's up. Thank you for your time. Appreciate that.
May I ask you just one question?
Certainly.
How long have you lived in the house you're in now?
Since two thousand and eight, fifteen years.
Were you involved in the original plan of this?
No, I've been on the outside. It really kind of came to, it kind of came to my.
I guess I'm asking why weren't you? Because I know we had a lot of citizen input into the plans that are in place around.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't aware of it. Certainly. I understand. All right.
Thank you.
Great time.
I just want to say something right quick. There will be opportunity to, because I spoke with the city manager about the mitigation to kind of lessen the effect of it, and so there'll be some opportunity to get involved. So hopefully you will stay in connection with the city.
Yes, first time I've been to talk to the city council. I really appreciate the opportunity. And look forward to coming back. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Whitley?
Thank you, Mayor Jones, for letting me come before to counsel tonight and counsel people. I appreciate your time. My name is Ed Whitley. I live at four oh three Mansfield Road, Newport News, Virginia. I was on the planning program for Riverview Farm Park when we did it, just to let you know I have worked with the city. I'm here this evening to honor the boys and men who died between eighteen sixty-one and eighteen sixty-five for this Commonwealth from Warwick County. I am requesting that you put on an agenda this monument, the monument to the Confederate dead, to be re-erected in the city. By re-erecting it at Huntington Park, at the War Museum, would be the most accepted place, as that's where we honor all of our militia, military men from the peninsula, Newport News, Warwick County. Or you could put it at Inview, in the grove where the Confederate soldiers are buried. If you don't like those two spots, we could put it at the point down at Riverview Farm Park, where the berms came across, where McGruder ran his berms from the Warwick River all the way over to Newport News City Park, and where he held off McCullin. Or you could put it at Dam One. Any one of those four locations would be good. They would be at positions where they would not be offensive to those that do not appreciate the monument. But to clarify the monument, in the year 2020, the council of Newport News voted to remove the monument from the city, from the courthouse in Warwick County, which was, is a museum. It stood there since nineteen oh five, when it was erected to honor the dead sixteen-year-old boys and men that fought in a militia for the county. It has nothing to do with slavery, nothing on that, on their comments about slavery. It does have the battle flag, which is the Saint Andrews Cross, which is a Christian cross. And that was put there so that, because it was the flag used on the battlefield for the soldiers to rally around when called for retreat. And it's put on the monuments so that the souls of these soldiers that did not make it home have a place to rally around, and that's the only reason why it's there. Wherever we put it, we can put a consecralization sign up to explain the monument. But these men need to be honored, just like my generation that went to Vietnam, your generation that, that has gone to Iraq and Iran, Syria, my father's military in the Korean War and World War Two, my great-grandfather in World War One, and I can take you on back. But these, these men need to be honored because they served this Commonwealth. They served Warwick County, which is now Newport News. They, they deserve to be honored as well as anybody else.
Thank you, sir.
And one, I'd like to make one more point. In that army, it was the first army that was integrated. You had whites, you had blacks, you had Indians. They fought together as, as troops, they slept together, and they ate together. The blacks were not put over into a small corner, the Indians in a small corner, they all slept together.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And thank you for our phone call last week. I appreciate the time.
Thank, thank you for talking to me.
Of course.
Councilwoman Woodbury, thank you for talking to me. They have my number that they receive tonight. Any one of you councilmen would like to talk to me, I'll be glad to sit down and talk because I can talk. because I can talk for hours on this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Jerry Ferguson, 12 Horsepin Road, here again to discuss the Flax Mill Trail. First, I'd like to say thanks to the mayor who came out after last council meeting to see our dilemma, also Councilman Long. I'm going to take something from earlier tonight to start because, yes, there was a citizens committee, but we would like to know something about that committee because we didn't give input because we weren't asked, because they didn't come to our neighborhood, the people directly affected. What I'd like to say is, if they put a walking trail that budded up to your property, would you like it? And I don't think anybody here would say yes. Second, the Newport News Virginia Gov. website is not a friendly website. It is hard to use, hard to find any information. But I did a lot of digging in it, spent a lot of time. We found some articles. What would you, what we heard, Part One, report to the Citizen Advisory Committee from Citizens want to create a walkable waterfront and public access and parking to allow for water activities, including kayaking and fishing. This trail does not do that. Option agreement, an agreement of purchase sale between the city of Newport News and HRSD for Swift. The general pedestrian trail along Flax Mill Creek will be at least eight feet wide. In the handout you had, which came from that, you can see the purple, which is designated as Phase One. So all the trees have already cut down. Now they got to cut down at least an eight-foot path, and they're going to put in wooden walkways and asphalt. That's not nature. Asphalt has never been nature. The existing Phase One says it will be done by December 31st, 2023. That's the end of this year. If you look at Phase One, again, that's the purple in the handout. That goes all the way around. Phase Two is the yellow in the handout. It's not going to be completed till 2026. Well, that's three years of no way to get anywhere but backtracking. That makes no sense. We are requesting a sit-down with city council, the staff, and if you can find those citizens from that citizen committee, so we can discuss this where we have more than three minutes to have some back and forth. Councilman Long returned to call to me and said that they were looking into that, but we would like to have that happen because we need more than three minutes to discuss this. The lack of transparency that has been seen from this just is unacceptable.
Thank you, sir.
Honorable mayor, council members, my name is Elliot Lane. You haven't seen me since the 24th of January, but I'm back again. My wife and I live at 12 Horsepin Road in Newport News with property that's immediately adjacent to Flax Creek. And I'm here again tonight to oppose the Flax Creek Trail as it's been proposed. And let me just say this before we get there. 30 years ago, I was honored to be appointed to the Riverview Farm Park Task Force, on which I served for the entire 11 years it was, it was in existence, along with eight or nine other people who were very dedicated to the cause and to, to build a great park, which I think we, we helped to do. We were charged with the responsibility of reviewing the different activities that were proposed to go in, in the park. It was our responsibility to determine from our point of view what, whether or not we think we could recommend certain activities and not recommend other activities. In doing so, there were a number of criteria which we utilized to determine whether the activity was a good activity or may not be such a good activity for it, and that should, should be eliminated. First of all was, and probably the, the most important criteria that we used in the very beginning was if it violated the privacy of the adjacent property owners, homeowners, landowners, whatever, was a, a quick way to get it next. If it, if it did violate the privacy of the existing people, then it didn't get approved. A second, second thing, if it created a, a loss of security and safety, we went over this the last time, I won't go back over it again. If it caused a potential loss or lowering of property values. And number four was whether or not there was a need for, for the particular activity. And I think we went over this last time, but the, the existing two-mile trail at the current park is never crowded. My wife and I walk it every day that the weather will permit us to walk it, and we have for many years, and it's never crowded. That's a two-mile trail. If you eliminate the Flax Creek portion of it, which violates the, the privacy of 25-plus residents there who live and have property immediately adjacent to Flax Creek, then you've got an additional mile and a half going from the Minchville Marina around the, to the river and then down to the overlook. If that trail stops there and has a cul-de-sac for people to turn around and they've got it drawn down where the road is, it goes in front of the gymnastics center and so forth going back, that gives you an additional mile and a half of trail. That gives you three and a half miles of trail.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. That, it went red, then it went all. Don't worry, I got you full-time, but I appreciate you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I find this so depressing. I, this is the last time I came and I drove home and I said, I voted for some of these people. And what I find depressing is I come and I hear so many people with objections to different things, but everything's already been decided. And it feels like it's might over majority, and it's frustrating to me. So I'll get that out of the way because I wanted to cry, and I don't look pretty when I cry. I've requested that the building next door where you have to come in and pay for your personal property taxes and get your business license, I told them that they're not compliant with ADA because they haven't fixed that ramp. And I took the time to go upstairs to talk to whatever the people are supposed to be in charge, and I was given the promise that it would be addressed. When you drive up, there's no sign telling you if you're disabled, have a disability, where to go to get into the building. I have arthritis. Sometimes every step is painful, so trying to climb up those stairs is a real inconvenience. And I said, I'll even go to Office Depot and make a sign for you, something that gives us arrows that says, if you need to enter the building and you have a disability, drive to the other side and there's a ramp. I see people even more, with more difficulties than me coming up there, and you see the panic in our face because it's like every step is painful. So I would hope that somebody would address that because I feel that no matter what I present, nobody cares. And that's very depressing because I'm getting old. Also, I'd like to thank you, mayor, for when I came to the town meeting. You're the first person, I've been in this area for over 20 years, that ever said, thank you for coming. And Chief Drew, he and I had knocked heads at the very beginning because he wouldn't listen to me, but now everybody's saying what I said when I, when I went to his first town meeting, so I thank him because he shakes my hand. So many of us feel depressed. I've gone to all the Hampton Roads transit meetings. I've gone to all the meetings about revitalization, revitalization of downtown. I've gone everywhere, but everything's already done. Everything's already set, so my voices never have any meaning. And the last quick thing is, is it possible to have somebody talk to Channel Three and other stations? Because when they report what happened, for instance, at the town meeting, they always feature a middle-class white male talking and said that the whole meeting was about the school shooting. And so many of us feel like, why bother come? The media doesn't represent us. The city council doesn't represent us. I get so depressed and I, I know you're going like this, Ms. Vick, but we need to see changes. I used to be in charge of after-school programs in Montgomery County, Maryland, until my MS kicked in, and I was over several schools. And all I hear when I come to your meetings is, oh dear, oh dear, well, should we revisit this? I'm thinking, for God's sake, why does it take so long to just do simple things? Figure out how to open the fire station. Let, let us see that our voices are, have been heard and stop. Oh, one last thing. Why can't the ordinary people be featured first? We've got all these people. They get five, six, seven, eight times, and then we get three minutes, and it's the same topic, and I don't understand it. If this is democracy, it confuses me. Thank you.
Thank you for your.
Excuse me, ma'am. I, I have to tell you that I'm at a HRT meeting, and I have never heard you speak there.
I know.
So I want to invite you to come and speak.
If I don't, go home and kill myself. I'm sorry. Last time I was suicidal because I go to all these meetings. Sometimes I have to take the bus, like the gentleman said, and I go through all this effort, and they show all these beautiful schematics, but nothing that we say as people changes anything.
No, I, I hear you, ma'am, and we'll make sure, I, I'm on a lot of these boards now. We'll, we'll make sure that if it's not like an in-person, that there's like a Zoom link or, we, we can work that. And then we will tomorrow take a look at the ADA.
Thank you, because that's disgraceful.
We, that's, that's the most amazing thing we can take out. We'll take a look at that tonight slash tomorrow.
And then I'll drive down here and say, for goodness sake, somebody listen to me. Oh, I am alive.
Everyone here listens. We'll take a look at that, I promise.
I appreciate it.
Take care.
Not just for me, but for others.
For everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Now I have to try to be graceful.
It's, you're graceful, no worries.
And I've been trying to not go to the bathroom, so goodbye.
Wow. My name is Mary Scott Nakee, and I think you're all the greatest, may I say. And so I want to say that I was born and raised a Native American, born on Marlborough Island, and you all are still trying to fix the water on Rich Neck Road. It'll never happen. We have a lot of soft land there. It's not made for that kind of construction. And if you put it down, so I'm just boasting my opinion of that. I was raised in Yorktown and brought to Newport News in the middle area, as we called the Denby area. But what I'd like to talk to you about tonight is, with all the business that you have, the thing about homeless people, I don't want that to be added. So I would like to request that we, the Newport News Hampton Chapter, respectfully like to have a meeting with the mayor and to answer some of our questions and ideas that we would like to bring forth to you guys. It's very brand-new. It is something that you don't have to pay for because we have decided, people come from New York and Philadelphia, and they're just assume, you know, homeless can stay out on the street. Well, we don't do that here in Newport News, and I want to thank you very much for that. But we are thinking about purchasing a building of 280 units. And once we interview each and every person, finding out whether they're mentally ill or they're physically challenged, that their income would be added in order to pay for the rent, help with the taxes. Also, we would like to have those that are having grants from like different churches instead of here, there, and everywhere, they can combine that together, and that way they'll be able to fund a lot of the things that we need to do. So we would like to, what we're saying, that we're interested in keeping our city safe as you have for many, many years, and I'm very proud of that, and to treat people very respectfully, not to lead them out on the ground. In fact, you can't find one today and it's freezing cold, so they know where to go and where to shelter. So it's not something they don't know, but we like to treat them on a respectful level, and that is the purchase. And it will be on the main highway, where they can catch the bus, they will have dinner, they will be dressed, we will be able to take some of the clothes from your thrift shop, interior decorated in such a way that they'll have a place. If they have a card, this will be good. So if the policeman picks them up at the 7-Eleven where they're hanging out all day long, once we know, they can politely and respectfully return them back to their residence so you won't have that conflict about fighting and that they mistreat me, that you know where we were. So that's what we would like to do, and that's what I would like to say. And we'd like to have an appointment with you, Mayor Jones, at the time.
Let's do it next Wednesday.
Okay?
All right?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just if someone, someone outside will set it up when you walk outside. Thank you. Just there, out to the right. Yep. Thank you. Dominique Griffin? Okay. Jack Gregory?
Gregory.
Gregory, sorry. It's hour five.
Newport News, I'm John, Jack Ergley. I live at Winter Haven Drive. Newport News has made national history, national news recently, and actually international news because of our school system. I know you guys have no control, really have little control over the, the school board except for a financial, but I'm going to throw out a unique thing to start a conversation starter, I think. I think it's time for the city of Newport News to consider going back to appoint a school board where the, the problem, the, all the news has been about how the administration, you know, people for administration quit, they've been fired, things didn't happen. You, you have very little control over that, but years ago, we had appointed school, uh, school board. If you had that situation, you could appoint people, local professionals, local people who knew how to manage, who knew how to hire people, who knew how to hire administrators, how to set up processes and keep things going. Right now, we have a school board that just hasn't done a job. So I know this is not, you're, no one's going to jump on this right away. I just want you to think about this. There, there is a vehicle to do it. It would take petitions, it would take a referendum, it would be very hard, it would not be fast, but you need to really think about controlling, getting control, sub-control of the school board and getting them to be at least semi-professional in their hiring practices of, of, of the people you, they hire. You know, my, my. You know, my kids grew up in a very good Newport News school system. They're both, they went to William &amp; Mary. They went to Shipyard Predest School and graduated from Christopher Newport. But when they started raising their children, things... We had a good school system start. First couple got through. And then they, things got bad. There were incidents. There were a lot of problems. They start going to private schools. You were a classmate of our granddaughter Brooke. They finally moved to Hebrico County, where they got a good school system. We have a real problem here, and it is hurting our community. It is hurting our recruitment of businesses. We have a big brain drain. We really need to do something to think about this. And this is just, I hope, a conversation starter to think what we could do about improving our school system. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Pam Hall?
Good evening. I'm Pam Hall, and I live in the southeast community. The history of all of Newport News is important, not just beyond 39th Street. Moving Huntington Middle School from sacred ground at 3401 El Orchid Avenue is rewriting the history of the southeast community. Huntington was one of the first schools in the country to have an enclosed football field. Citizens are still outraged at the move, and some are still unaware. There was no public hearing on moving the school. Comments used to push the narrative are from a 2018 public hearing where citizen comments and ideas were gathered about the area. But there was no mention of moving the school. If city council was so concerned about the education of the children, they should have done their part and provided the requested funding in 2018. And the children would have been back in a brand-new school in 2022. It is the school board's responsibility to oversee school construction, and the city council's responsibility is to provide funding. The reason the citizens decided on a new building is because we were told it would cost more and take longer if the building was renovated. But it was acceptable because the school was going to be in the same location. Please reject this plan to move Huntington to border a very busy, one-way street that is an unsafe place for our children. Government should be a democracy for the people, by the people. Democracy is never about one person, but the will of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Lilly Robinson?
Well, good evening and happy Valentine. And y'all, maybe Mr. Hannah ride, I might have to ride the bus over, but it was a good crowd. It was good to see all these people here. And then when I was listening to them about what they're doing in their neighborhood with all these wah-wahs and everything, and how their community is. And first of all, before I get there, because I understand, because I'm from downtown Newport News, I'd like to, once and before, I got a sure and tell for y'all, and I'm gonna be very short because I'm not gonna be back until about May. And so I'm leaving out tomorrow, trying to go spend some time with my great-grandchildren I ain't seen in Savannah for my 77th birthday. So I just wanted to be with y'all. I appreciate y'all from the day I came in here with y'all. Now, it wasn't so happy last year because you know who was sitting there? And I got something for him. All righty, this is just real short and everything. First of all, I'm doing like the rest of it. And I got all y'all beat. I was born and raised here. I was born in that old Whittaker Hospital. My son was born there. My daddy, like some of them say they did, he came from New Kent County. My mama from New Jersey and built us a place down there on 31st Street. Where I came from and when I was born here in Newport News, that old Whittaker Hospital, as bad as it was and stuff and everything. We had everything up Jefferson Avenue. We didn't need nothing. We'd had to go over town for nothing unless you worked in the shipyard. Just like I told y'all in the beginning, I left here in 1963 because there was no jobs here. There was no jobs here. I had my son. So I left and went to New York on a sleeping job. They used to send us girls. I worked up there and grown up in the different things, got married, had my last three children there and everything. So I went back, made a pit stop by Arkansas with my husband because I left New York because it was getting bad. My daddy told me before I left, in my moment, "You can always come back home." I came back here in 1978. When I came back here, everything was gone from Jefferson Avenue almost. Things was left. I moved to Walker Village in '79. Then I went in Shipyard and hated it. And I had a good life in St. Paul and did things and stuff. When I had a little section of anything. All righty, I'm 77. I'll be 77 Sunday. Newport News has not did anything for us. Y'all talking about all the wah-wahs and Chick-fil-A. They won't bring nothing down here to Newport News but their high-five Pickle Wiggly or their Jim. Pickle Wiggly chicken got feathers on it like it's from the farm. And they got me. Got me. Okay. 2007, I was in Marching Court. Now, that's the same Marching Court. I told you, we were middle-class. Your mayor and us, I was on 31st and Whittaker. He was on Marching. Marching Court was three blocks away. It belonged to the other race. They had little flower gardens and everything. It was like, you went in there. If your mama worked for, like we worked for that man, she worked for that man, and took care of his emblet right, or you delivered something. But we had it going on all up and down East City, all up and down Jefferson Avenue. Now, my question is to y'all. Come 2007, I found and lived my life, sectioned eight different places, like I said, the first place. So now I wonder, I never left downtown Newport News. Never. My sister went to Harvard because she thought you were better than us and Harvard had more stuff than us. All right.
Ma'am, it's at three minutes, but because it's your birthday, you get, I'm gonna give you two extra minutes.
Okay. And I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say this real fast because I've been sitting here waiting. And just like I said, they brought their whole people here. But like I told you, and I told them, they're watching y'all on Cox. Cox is here in our neighborhood. They charge us a fortune to cut us off in a minute, but they watch y'all. And so I moved to Marching Court in 2007. 2013, they moved me from 33rd Street and told me they're gonna remodel it. And I went to 35th. I was getting disabled, and I asked them for a raft and stuff. And they, then I put me a raft, my place flooded and everything. I took them in front of Hood and everything. Hood and stuff, told them and stuff to give me, they would give me $500 and move me to one of the renovated places. That never happened, I never. Then I went over here in 2013 to this house in East City. There used to be a house and stuff. Okay. And 2014, my leg was amputated. 2017, 18, before the COVID, the landlord took over and stuff. He's irate. They all in our neighborhood don't fix something else. I had to move out there, and I had to write the, had to get it out from housing. And so, and the lady was so nice. And honey, let me tell you something. I caught hell getting in there. That girl gave me hell from June the 1st. I'm staying in an old church that I used to cut across the yard and everything when I was growing up and stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
They have the roaches in the wall. I've been asking them for her. Miss, uh, Miss Curwile's them and Miss Billy them. I've been up there crying to them. I have, I'm telling you, they didn't have the piece for the shower and stuff. Tina, I had to stand up on one leg. And then the water come out the shower and stuff, and I'm sliding in the chair. And I wheelchair, not this one. I gotta push wheelchair, drag the foot. All that water on the floor. They had me waiting. From, I called you. I met Ms. Vick last year. I'm going right past it some because, because I'm trying to get it because I'm not coming back here. And the people told me to tell y'all, "Just give me a couple more minutes because I gotta ride across this bridge."
How about this? After, when it's all done, I'll come talk to you afterwards, okay? But just, I'll come talk to you. Just give me, we got one more card, and I'll come find you, okay?
I'm waiting on you.
All right.
I need help and stuff. And I need to get out there. And Ms. Pat and Ms. Vick, can I get her and them? I want her to come out to my house. I want her to come out to walk on me on Marching Court. They stole, they stole, and they still have a bill. And people bruised upon them. I want to come out. Marching Court, that church they got me living in, and the old Whittaker Hospital where my son and, we were born there, and they got SSI patient. When the Salvation Army took it over, they kept the homeless people. They closed it down, and then they opened it up, they ran out. And, oh, one thing, yeah.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And one more thing, no, no, this is some stuff. Uh, Ms. Vick, what I was telling you and everything, when you were saying about the house on 29th Street, they did have a apartment housing there. You wasn't born.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank y'all.
Yes, ma'am. Happy birthday.
I'll be back and stuff in May now.
Okay. Safe house in Savannah. Don't worry, I'll be there.
So I had to ride, I had to ride my wheelchair across the bridge because I missed my hand riding the bus. But, okay, and I told them I was still y'all, and they still watching y'all and stuff.
Janie Basemore. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Last one. Yes, ma'am.
I'll go back in and wait. Thanks a lot. I've been up here all night. We get out the way. Hey, honey.
Good morning. How you doing?
All right.
Good. Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm gonna give everybody permission to celebrate Valentine's Day tomorrow. Y'all can do that. Thanks for coming. Good evening. My name is Janie Basemore, and I reside on Hampton Avenue in Newport News. Mr. Mayor and city council members, always a pleasure. You know what? I've been doing this for four years, going on five years now, talking about Huntington Middle School. Today, somebody referenced it, two people speaking for Huntington. Yeah, it's two people, but we speak for the masses. We've had over 400-plus people who basically signed petitions that got totally ignored. Most of the southeast community is against moving Huntington Middle School. Over a month ago, Mr. Mayor, at this podium, we requested a meeting so that you and the council would be able to understand why we are out here fighting for the school to remain at its current location and the concern of our community being ignored and disrespected. No responses for you so far. We've given you time. And I just ask you one thing, that if we do have a meeting and we walk into that room, please do not say to us, "It's a done deal," like the last mayor did to us. There are two people consistently here, but these two people who are consistently here outnumbers the one person who put this plan into action with several improprieties. And we want to talk about it. Our 400-plus petitions were denied for over a year. As I always say, Huntington Middle School shall rise again. It shall rise again at 3401 Orchid Avenue. I have faith, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe you have a mission to celebrate Valentine's Day tomorrow.
With the, I believe we're up to new business. Our next item is new business. City manager?
Nothing, sir.
City attorney?
Nothing, sir.
City clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Harris?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out and sharing on tonight, and that's all I have, Mayor Jones.
Councilman Long?
Hi, too. Wanted to just thank everyone for coming out and sharing with the people from City Farm, or the Flax Mill has already left, but hopefully they'll connect with the city when we talk about the mitigation efforts for that Flax Mill Trail that'll be going past the neighborhood. So just stay tuned for that.[1670.94]